Is there anyone that can't hear me besides?
I can hear you.
Okay, well, I'll do the best and I guess I'd ask all of my board colleagues to project the very best that you can. Use your, uh, what kind of voice is this one, Mr. Wester?
Outdoor.
Use your outdoor voice. There you go. Um, so, uh, what I'd like to do at this time is, uh, have everyone stand and, uh, we'd like to recognize, uh, a moment of silence and remembrance for the victims of the seventeen victims, students, staff, the Marjory Stone and Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida a couple of weeks ago, uh, prior to our pledge of allegiance. So just a moment of silence and remembrance. Thank you, and you can join the school board in, uh, for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the virginity and justice for all.
The, uh, so the next thing is item number three, approval of the minutes. Uh, these will be the minutes, uh, from the last school board meeting, uh, which was, uh, two weeks ago.
I think emotionally, uh, approved the minutes. I stated.
Second.
We got a motion from Tom and a second from Karen to approve those minutes. Any questions or concerns, comments? Uh, hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Approval of the vouchers, item number four.
I move approval of the vouchers from February twelfth, two thousand eighteen. Uh, checks drawn on bank in Milton in the amount of three hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars and three cents. Void's totaling one hundred and twenty dollars.
Second on that motion.
We have a motion from, uh, Betsy and a second from Tom, uh, to approve, uh, those vouchers. Any questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, that motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we come to, uh, item, uh, number four, which is what I think a lot of folks are probably here for, uh, excuse me, item number five, uh, public comment, and we have a number of people that have signed in here for public comment.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes, sir.
There is, uh, a sign up, and as people are signing up, I will grab that phone.
Right.
So it looks, that'll be further back in the line.
And thank you for that reminder, Mr. Shiger. Again, uh, your opportunity to speak at your public comment is here this evening. Uh, given the large turnout here, I would request, however, again, uh, please sign in, um, and so that we can, uh, allegedly print your name so that we can read your name, uh, correctly, and so, uh, please sign in, it's not too late to do so, but, uh, I don't, one thing we're probably not gonna do tonight is at the end, like we have sometimes done, is if you, it's still like the public, I think we're gonna have a lot of public comment here tonight, and what, and one thing I might offer as a suggestion, you're certainly welcome to the three minutes, uh, to address the board. If you decide, uh, that the four people ahead of you have already spoke to the, the point that you wanted to make and you feel not inclined, you're, you're certainly still welcome to do so, but don't feel like it's an obligation because you did just sign it, but you certainly are, uh, welcome to do so. I just wanna point that out. Um, I would like to, so for some of you, uh, that haven't been to a school board meeting before, I would like to, uh, go through the, uh, rules of public comment that we've approved years ago. Uh, number one, and we're gonna violate this rule, I think, right off the bat, and that is we typically limit, cause I put this on agenda, item fifteen minutes. Uh, based on the large number of people signing up, we wanna give everybody the opportunity to speak if you so choose so, so I suspect we're gonna go beyond that fifteen minutes. Number two, individuals will be limited to three minutes, uh, per public comment, and I think what'll work out best is I'll, I'll, uh, I'll say the name and I'll also say the name that's on deck. So if I say you're on deck, you're, you might wanna make your way towards the front of the room, so we can, in the interest of time for everyone and out of respect for all of our speakers, so we'll try to keep that moving. Mr. Wester will be my timekeeper for the three minutes, uh, and we're gonna try to adhere to that to the best of our ability. Uh, number three, the board president, which is me, uh, if this meeting has the authority to recognize speakers and keep time and maintain the order. Uh, would just ask that you be respectful in your comments and please refrain from using, uh, names. Um, all speakers are expected to be respectful of the board and all other individuals. Uh, questions will be answered by the board president or the presenting officer, more clarifying kinds of questions. We're, since, uh, we're not in a position, uh, to respond, uh, that you don't expect a response from the board, and we take your comments under advisement. Uh, questions may be referred to further study or a later response, uh, we'll often try to direct your comments to, uh, administration for an appropriate response at a later time. Uh, personnel, and again, personnel and student issues are not to be discussed in open session and will be discouraged during public comment. Um, the board shall not act on or discuss any items from public comment. The board shall limit itself to no meet, no media response. Uh, we can ask clarifying kinds of questions, uh, perhaps consideration for placing the matter on a future agenda, referring, uh, comments to administration for clarification and so forth. So, uh, with that, uh, we do welcome your comments, as I said, we got a number of people that have signed up, and we're gonna start with, uh, first one is, uh, Jerry Bailey, and follow, following Jerry Bailey would be Cole Wett. So Jerry Bailey, you're up first, and followed by Cole Wett, you're on deck. Uh, as, as you come to the podium, if you just state your name, your address, and, uh, and then you proceed.
I, I, when you have, um, thirty seconds left, I'll raise my hand, uh, get your attention somehow. Okay, thank you.
So it's Jerry Bailey. My address is four J. H. Hopperidge, Forte, Michigan.
You're gonna have to stop on there?
All right, so first of all, thank you for, um, taking the time to listen and consider how we as parents of swimmers feel about our Milton swim family and pool. Uh, my son swims for Milton USA. He's fourteen, he's in eighth grade, he's gonna be a freshman next year. When he was three years old, his mother was diagnosed with cancer and passed away when he was five. Um, he was often really bad stutter shortly after her passing. Uh, I took a degree post-living speech there to try to help out with his issues. The degree counselor suggested trying to get him involved in sports, um, and maybe a way to cope with what he was dealing with. Uh, we tried T-ball, we tried basketball, we tried football, none of these were sports for him. Um, shortly after moving here, we ended up putting him in the swim office here at the high school. Um, that's when he found his niche. Uh, right now, he can't be here tonight because he's definitely swimming right now, practicing. Uh, he made the state team for the state swim meet, so he's very excited about that. Um, about, after two years of rep, he decided he wanted to compete at a higher level and swim bigger meets against higher level swimmers with a dream of making state representing Milton. Um, he also won most improved swimmer while he was swimming in rep. Um, like I said, tonight he's swimming because he did make that dream of his. Um, so much, he was so proud of it, he actually dyed his hair red in order to represent Milton for state. Wasn't my plan, but, um, um, he's got more dreams than just making state. Um, they're more realistic dreams, not dreams of getting the next Michael Phelps or swimming in the Olympics, yeah, dreams of swimming for the Milton High School team, dreams of bringing home a state trophy in relays with his friends, and dreams of earning a swim scholarship to a great college. Um, when he first heard the news from a friend that there was a chance that the school would be closing the pool, he came to me with lots of questions that I had no answers to, um, and that's why I'm here today, not just for his dreams, but for all the kids' dreams that are a big, part of this big swim team of ours, this family of, of swimmers. Um, I don't wanna fail my son or any of these kids by standing by and waiting for the dust to settle and see what happens. Um, he's outgrown his stutter, um, that he developed, and he has not outgrown his love for Milton, for the Milton swim team, for the Milton coaches, and the Milton teammates that he has. Uh, so we're asking you to do the right thing and not fail our kids, not be in our school tradition, and not fail our swim coaches who work so hard for our kids, and not fail our Milton swim family. So, please, keep this pool open.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bailey.
For our Milton High School, but I've, I've been connected to the Milton High School pool long before now. When I was in first grade, I parent signed me up for swim lessons at the pool, and I learned how to swim there. Swimming and water safety is a priceless lesson to teach a child. In fact, drowning is the second leading cause of accidental death in children ages down to fourteen. The Milton High School pool is the only public pool in Milton, and without it, there will be no swim lessons teaching kids how to stay safe in the water. After completing my swim lessons, I joined the Milton-Marlin Swim Team. I met some of my closest friends to this day on the team, and I learned valuable lessons about hard work, dedication, and belief in yourself. The closing of the pool would be an obvious detriment to the continuation of the Milton-Marlin Swim Team, will potentially take away the opportunity for many kids to discover their love for swimming. If this swim team wouldn't have existed when I was younger, I probably would have never started swimming, and now I can't imagine my life without it. This is a real, reality for many of the other people in this room, and it will, without a doubt, be a reality for many kids in the future. It isn't, it isn't just young kids that are directly affected by this pool. Numerous community members use the Milton High School pool from five to seven every morning. For some, for some, this is one of the few options for aerobic exercise that isn't hard on your body. Additionally, the pool provides volunteer job opportunities and coaching positions on the swim team, lifeguarding. I think the girls have done the same since nineteen ninety-nine. I'm proud to have contributed to this, uh, this year, and the Milton, um, swimming program is highlighted by successful alumni which have earned, um, international, uh, swimming medals and made Olympic trial finals. Um, Milton has a long history of swimming and this legacy that bears to extend long into the future.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Wett. Uh, next speaker is Tracy Douglas, and on deck would be Peg Cad.
Hi, my address is four J. H. Hopperidge, Forte, Michigan, J. Phil, Wisconsin, and I am a Milton High School alumni, class of eighty-seven. Thank you, Mr. Bailey. When I was in school, I was athlete, and actually, my record still holds for the four-hundred meter dash in track. Now, I want my kids to have the same opportunities that I had thirty years ago at minimum, and this would include making sure that the pool stays open. I have four children, one of whom is a freshman right now, who just joined the swim program, and I can tell you how impressed I was with what he was able to learn there, the camaraderie, the, um, motivation that they got from their teammates, the growth, the achievement, it's absolutely been spectacular, and I would like that access to be there for my children. So I'm here to ask you to do what you can do to prioritize keeping that pool open. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tracy. Uh, next is, uh, Peg Cad, and, uh, followed by Chloe Dundee would be on deck.
I'm Peg Cad, I have fifty-eight children, I'm a boy and a girl in Milton here. Um, my husband and I have had, well, we have fourteen children, and twelve of those children have gone through, are going through the Milton school this year. I'm here to talk to, about what an amazing group of people that we have in Milton, guys. We have amazing staff, amazing people, and we need to start putting things back into our community. We need to prioritize the pool, we need to take care of the track. As a mom to that many children, I can tell you that kids need sports. They need the extracurricular programs, the music program. We have, we need to put that down for our children. Um, I'm also a real estate broker for over twenty years, and I can tell you that when people would call me when I first came here, the first thing they would ask is what school district? And then they would do their research. These are people that would come in from California and Arizona and all over, and they would do their research, and they would pick up the schools. That's the people that we have here. We're not gonna have that if we don't take care of our, our track and our pool and all those other things that are at stake. Um, I'm also a taxpayer here, so I think I can talk about that as well. Um, and I'm a tightwad. When you have that many kids, you have to be a tightwad, okay? And so being a tightwad, I don't like to spend money, so I came here to the board meeting last time, that they had a board meeting, and I realized how bad it is. I went home and talked to my husband, we gotta do something, folks. We're that kinda community. In April, my husband had a heart attack at the Milton Y, and he died, except for Marcy Cullen and two other beautiful women that jumped in right away and did CPR. That's the kinda community we are, folks. We jump in and we make it happen and we get work. That's what we gotta do for our kids. They're our future. I, I don't like being up here talking in front of everybody, but we need to, we need to stand together and make sure our children are taken care of because they are our future.
Next is Chloe Dundee, and, uh, on deck would be Marcia Henry.
Well, this past week or so, I've been asked to evolve the Milton swim team. I was in the thought, it should become a rest in my head. I remember when I first joined the Milton-Marlin rec team, I loved it. I loved learning, getting better, and mostly the sense of involvement. Then as I got older, I moved up to the US state team. Again, I loved it. Everything about it, my coaches, my teammates, even the hard workouts, it felt like a family. The pool was my safe spot, but when I'm sad or when I need to think, the pool's always been there for me. This pool's given me my best friends and showed me what I wanna do in life. For the past few years, I've been given the wonderful opportunity to coach kids in exchange for volunteer hours. And while volunteer hours are great, the feeling I get when I see kids get stroked down with a straight style on their face, or even just seeing them meet their lifetime best friend, that is the most rewarding feeling ever because I know how they feel because the school has given them the same. I want the future kids in Milton to be able to have that same opportunity that I have because there is nothing to compare to it. So thank you, Sheila, Brian, John, and all the coaches I've had over the years. Thank you, Megan, Addie, Emma, Adri, for helping me get through hard workouts, teaching me what true friendship is, and lastly, thank you to the Milton pool for providing kids just like me with discipline, determination, friendship, and a safe spot. I will value that forever.
Okay, thank you, Chloe. Uh, next up is, uh, Marcia Henry, and followed by, uh, deck would be Sophie Randall.
My name is Marcia Henry, I'm five-four-four-one, single, married, and working. Uh, I originally came tonight to talk about the sports co-op, and since that has been taken off of the agenda, I would like to ask a question as to why it was taken off the agenda specifically for girls gymnastics. It's my understanding that a decision has to be made by April first as to whether or not we're going to be going into a co-op with them, and that was gonna be discussed at this board meeting, Ederson's board meeting next month, people's favor with the new April first. Um, sports co-ops are designed to benefit schools that individually do not have enough interest in the sport to fill a roster, therefore multiple schools combined to form one team. Milton High School has ample interest in girls gymnastics. This year, the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen roster consisted of twenty-plus girls, and they had to make cuts from that team in order to get down to that number. Um, from what I understand, there's one really good gymnast that's coming in as a freshman in the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year, and a few of her friends will want to follow to participate, and that's great. Gymnastics is a fantastic sport, but they could school a choice into the district to participate in gymnastics. It's all attracting as many girls from our program, and we know we would benefit from those tax dollars coming in to Milton School District versus starting a co-op, which I won't even watch the wind to what all of that would entail. Um, so I'm just curious as to why it was taken off of the agenda, if it's, it's gonna happen, and, um, thank you, Tracy.
Okay, thank you, Marcia. Uh, next up is, uh, Sophie Randall, and following Sophie, uh, looks like Jen Tranter would be on deck.
Hi, I'm Sophie Randall. I'm a junior at Milton High School and a career sport athlete. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight about two sports facility concerns. My first concern relates to the current two thousand eighteen track season. I'm concerned about the deterioration of our current track facilities and for a second year, leading to the removal of the track service. It is disappointing that student athletes will have to participate off-site and will have no home track meets again this season. Not having any home track meets last year was a rough season, since we were allowed to practice on track but not compete. Not competing at home made for additional late nights at school. My second concern relates to current Milton schools. My personal experiences go back to when I was four, taking swim lessons. Through the years, starting with taking swim lessons, I then joined Milton-Marlin Swim Team, following the journey that I've joined in the Milton High School Swim Team, as well as becoming a lifeguard and swim lesson teacher. Teaching swim lessons has been an opportunity for me to teach kids how to swim and be safe around the water, along with have them look up to me the way I looked up to my lesson teachers over the years. I'm also asking to take into consideration the number of facilities in our community that depend on the school district for swim lessons for their children. Initially, my job at the Milton High School pool is putting money towards my college fund for me to have a project to continue my education. I'm disappointed looking in my senior year of high school where I have the possibility of not having a single home or swim or track meet. I'm asking you often to prepare our current facilities and take our concerns under advisement when making plans for our, for the future of our facilities. Thank you again for this opportunity.
Okay, thank you, Sophie. Uh, next up is, uh, Jen Tranter, and on deck would be Elizabeth Parker.
Good evening. I'm Jen Tranter, and my address is three fifty-three Ferry and Ride, Forte, Milton. And I grew up here in Milton, and I'm now raising my two children here in this great community, and, um, the pool has always held a very important place in my life. I grew up living right across this reef from the high school and was what I would call a pool rat. Um, each summer, I would take lessons in the morning and then go home for lunch, come back for free swim in the afternoon, go home for dinner, and then go back to free swim in, um, late at night. Um, many of my best childhood memories happened at the pool, and I developed just a love for, of the water and a love of feeling myself lie through it. I've been so pleased, these, my love of the water flourished in my own daughter over the last few years. My daughter Addie has been in Milton-Marlin for the last three years. I watched as this quiet, timid girl has transformed into a confident, young woman. The cool and friendships she's made there have helped to shape her into who she is. The thought of losing this place, that is so important to us all, it breaks our hearts. Yet, it wasn't just a fact to my family. What about the seventy-five other Milton-Marlin swimmers who love this place? Or the college and high school students who spend their summers here instructing young swimmers? Or the young swimmers that spend their time here learning all those important life skills of water survival? Or what about the lifelong swimmers who swim each morning just to stay fit? As you can see, losing the pool affects us all, and not in a positive way. Because of this, I beg you all to find a way to keep our pool open and our swim program continuing to go strong. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you, Jen. Uh, next up is Elizabeth Parker, and on deck would be, uh, Tina Nording.
Um, good evening. My name is Elizabeth Parker, I'm in eighth grade, Towardville Drive, Milton. And I'm here as a mom, but not speaking from a senior for my daughter. My daughter is freshman in high school, and like many people in this room, is a student athlete, and tonight, she's a student, she's home, she's studying, she's dedicated to those, those goals and the academic side, but she's prepared an email that she sent to the board members earlier this evening, and she asked me to come here and read it. I'm gonna tear up because this is reading so much. My name is Ellie Parker. I'm a, I'm a high school student and a swimmer at Milton, for the Milton-Marlin USA and High School Swim Team. I've been a Milton-Marlin swim team since I was seven years old, and I can swim something I love and have done for more than half of my life. I want to share my feelings about the Milton High School pool and how important it has been to me and the impact it takes on our community. Swimming is just like every other sport, with ribbons, medals, and trophies, and not for me to compete and be part of a team. I have a box in my closet full with ribbons and medals and a few trophies on my shelf, and even though those are just physical, physical memories of how important swimming and being a team member is to me, swimming means more than that. I have made so many friends through swim team, including people that I had never met before that are now some of my closest friends due to the high school swim program, pool and swimming. It's a sport that I love to do and something that has taught me some important life support skills and lessons that will stay with me for my whole life. Some of the life skills that swimming has taught me include time management, dedication, communication, teamwork, and work ethic. Being a high school student means that I need to balance my homework, practice, and meet schedule. With two-hour practices after school, morning practices, and meets every week, I've learned to prioritize my tasks and use my time wisely. I've learned that the importance of teamwork and dedication to something you're committed to. Being part of team is awesome, extremely important, and has helped me so much when it comes to group projects and how to work with people around me. Also, to do work well in any sport, you have to work hard, and that's what helped me learn how much work I needed to put into school, swim, show fire, and there were older high school swimmers who coached and encouraged me. They became mentors and role models. Now that I am a coach for the Marlin rec team, I love that I am able to give back to the sport that I love so much. I hope that I can be a mentor or role model for some of the kids. People like what the high school pool offers, such as the swim team or swim lessons, can help give the things that I have learned to other people and allow them to enjoy something close to home. The relationships built through swim, whether friendships or role models, help make the community stronger. I have heard about some of the dangers and struggles that surround the pool, and I would be grateful if some of them were addressed so that others can benefit in the same way I have. I hope that this email is helpful when it comes to your decisions. Thank you for your consideration and time. And she asked me as I walked out the door to have everyone who's here for the pool raise their hand to show how many people this affects in this community. So if you're here for the pool, please raise your hand. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, thank you, Elizabeth. Uh, next up is, uh, Tina Nording, and on deck would be, uh, Mike Kreis. So Tina.
Hi, I'm Tina Nording. I live at fifty-four twenty-five Forte Bridge Drive, J. Phil, Wisconsin. Good evening. I'm a mother to boys at the high school as well as a district employee. I've been attending various school board meetings since last June, as well as observing and from delivering my hope. I felt it was important for me to speak tonight about the facilities in the district. This year, we asked our youngest son, our freshman, to try swim to help him and to keep in shape over the winter. This is a child that did not know how to dive, did not know how to do swim turns, and really achieved a lot this year. It was my son's first experience with swimming besides swim lessons at the high school pool. The experience exceeded both my husband's and my expectations. Chase loved the coaches, his teammates, and the experience. This team is young but has so much potential. The varsity team went five and three, and the JV team went to conference. This speaks volumes to the potential of this team. The pool at the high school is an important asset to the high school as well as to both the boys and girls swim team. In fact, it is an asset to the entire community. I would hate to see this team become consolidated with another team within the conference. The students pay pride in being Milton Red Hawks swimmers and trying to build a condo record from this year as a team. As a teacher, I was so impressed with the culture of the team, that each member was striving to help one another become successful swimmers. The swimmers gave each other guidance, suggestions, and encouragement throughout the swim season. It was an amazing experience and can only get better the years to come as Milton Red Hawks swimmers. As an educator, I teach my students that we study the past to learn from our mistakes. We are past the point of blaming in regards to our failing facility. Our district's leadership, school board, and team members have changed in the past twenty years since I've been teaching in the district. When I teach my students about American history, I talk about how our country was created and how our government was formed. We are the nation we are today thanks to our founding fathers who listened to opposing viewpoints and compromised to make this country a great nation. Let's begin to truly listen to the concerns of each side and compromise to come to a resolution that everyone can live with. Let's be amazing role models for our youth and model how to listen to a variety of viewpoints, analyze the situation, problem solve, and come together to form a solution to our district's problems. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tina. Uh, so next up is, uh, Mike Kreis.
I concede my time.
Okay, all right, all right, Mike. And then, uh, so then we come to Sam Martin. Sam, you are up, and, uh, well, on deck would be Allison Kojo. So we have Sam Martin.
Hi, I'm Sam Martin. I live at sixty-one thirty-nine, Forte, Michigan. Um, I originally came here tonight to kinda speak on behalf of the Hawks, but I think what I'm about to say will speak on everything's behalf. Um, about four, five years ago, I started coaching baseball here at Milton and, um, I originally came here tonight to kind of speak on behalf of the Hawk Zone, but I think what I'm about to say will speak on everything's behalf. About four, five years ago, I started coaching baseball here at Milton and I met a kid, short, scrawny kid. He wasn't the best baseball player in the world and he, but one thing he did have was a passion for the game. And as we kind of worked together and we grew closer to one another, he told me, you know, his dreams is to play college baseball. Three months ago, he walked into the Hawk Zone, walked up to me with a giant smile on his face and he said, "Sam, I did it. I signed with the team. I'm going to play college baseball." And I know, seeing a lot of my old teachers and a lot of my coaches, old coaches here in the room today, that that's a feeling that can't be matched as an educator, as a coach, as someone superior. To help someone do that is just an amazing feeling. And I'm here to tell you today that I don't believe that that player would have been able to do it without the Hawk Zone, because I was in the same shoes in high school. And I had to find elsewhere to go to get myself to the level where coaches would look at me and to where I was able to achieve my dreams as well. And, you know, not a lot of kids in this district were as lucky as I was, where my parents were able to pay the amount of money they did to help seek, find a place where I could practice during the winter, or some kids might not even have the time to do it. I would have to wake up at 5:30 in the morning on a Saturday and a lot of kids don't have that opportunity. So what I'm asking the board tonight is to allow the coaches and the educators in the room to continue to give kids that chance to achieve their dreams with the facilities in Milton and that kind of stuff. That, you know, because I want to keep coaching here for a very long time and I don't want that feeling of that, that situation where a kid comes up to me and smiles and yells, "I did it," to come every five years. I want it to come every year in multiple times. So thank you.
Okay, thanks, Sam. So next up is Allison Kojo.
Koya.
Koya. And followed would be someone that might be related to is Lauren. Yeah, okay, so Allison, it's all yours.
Hello, I'm Allison Koya.
Sure.
I'm a 19-year-old sophomore at Milton-Marlin. I'm in grade eight in Milton-Marlin. I've been swimming for two years. When I grow up, I want to be a lifeguard. I want to teach people to swim. I love swimming with my friends. I love swimming and getting, please, please, for a second. I also love practicing in the middle so far. It's a good time. I'm good. I'm looking at the ball and it's very big and wanting the base and spread my finger is aiming out with my face. I think softball is cool and helpful. Please keep the glow in the up a little bit.
Okay, thank you. Lauren, Lauren Koya.
Koya.
Koya. I'll get it ready. Koya.
I am Lauren Koya. I am a 33-year-old sophomore at Milton-Marlin. I am a fifth grade student at Northside Elementary School. I was straight-开着all my classes and I compete, and I competed in Battle of the Books and this, and I got into the Sunday Finals for interpretive reading. I have been a well-kept softball team in the Milton-Marlin sports, in the Milton-Marlin swim team. Sports help me be a leader in front of a crowd. I am not afraid to stand up for myself because of sports. I think that the pool and the Hawk Zone are a great place to make friends, exercise, and compete against each other. Why don't we do healthy things instead of playing video games all day? Please, keep the Hawk Zone and the pool open and wear your Milton pride. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lauren. I apologize, I didn't call Jen Snow. Jen Snow is up at this time. Jen Snow comes up. And on deck would be Sheila Kreis.
All right. Tonight, this is Jen Snow and I live in the county apartment. I'm not going to get all emotional with wonderful kids here. I'm going to quote Martin Luther King Jr. "I came to the conclusion that if there is an existential moment in your life when you must decide to speak for yourself, nobody else can speak for you," he quote. I am here to address the board as it relates to its behavior. This is directly at the demeaning, dismissive, ignoring, condescending, divisive, berating, and condoning behavior displayed from the board in these meetings. While watching the board meetings online, I have noticed these meetings have become an increasingly hostile environment rather than a collaborative one. While it is necessary for debate on solutions to the state of our facility and the path to help improve student learning, the behavior displayed during these debates have made this board nonproductive. The vision statement and core values created by the board as stated on the district website are not being followed by board members. For example, safe learning environment, shared responsibilities, and rights and responsibilities. How is it that each of this district's schools have positive behavior interventions and support statements? That staff and students are taught and recognized for following these statements? And yet, the school board members are not held to these same standards. Conflict resolution and trust-building training should be seriously considered in order for this board to move forward to the environment of the students and staff. There needs to be a movement away from special interest action and personal agendas to be an effective school board. Codes of conduct, roles and responsibilities of members of the board, in my opinion, need to be reevaluated so that the board, the administration, and the public understand the board's responsibilities. Student learning and achievement will suffer due to this continued chosen lack of collaboration and undefined roles, responsibilities, and codes of conduct of this current board. I challenge each board member to self-regret and really let the values and mission of this school board be at the forefront of their mind when having discourse at meetings. So as I began, I'm going to end with Martin Luther King Jr. Quote, "As my suffering mounted, I soon realized that there were two ways in which I could respond to my situation, either to react in bitterness or to sneak, to transform the suffering into creative force. I decided to follow the latter course," end quote. So what response will you as a collective board choose? Thank you.
Okay. Next up is Sheila Kreis and on deck would be Libby Donovan.
Hi, I'm Sheila Kreis. I am not a district resident, but I am a parent of a district student and swim athlete. And as a swim coach for both the MHS girls team and the Milton-Marlins, I am heavily invested in this community. I am also a lifeguard as well as a former competitive swimmer and swim instructor myself. As you may surmise, swimming has had a profound impact on my life and has helped shape who I am today. I'm here to speak about the concerns surrounding the current state of the pool and the very real potential of a pool closure. I am not going to regurgitate the specifics of the current structural issues facing the pool. You've heard much about this over the course of the past several years, two failed referendums, and most recently at the February 12 board meeting. Rather, I feel it is important to talk about, talk to you about the incredible impact this facility has had on this community in its over fifty-two-year-old, fifty-two-year history. One can simply step onto the pool deck and be immediately struck by the thousands of photos lining the walls of the pool depicting people of all ages and abilities engaged in various swim-related activities, including swim lessons, life learning, water safety and swim instructor courses, Special Olympics programming, PIA classics, birthday parties, open swim, adult lap swim, water exercise, scuba training, competitive swim, including Milton High School girls and boys, as well as Milton-Marlin's rec and USA club teams. These activities all enrich the local community in a number of ways. Swimming and water exercise provide opportunities for people of all ages to engage in meaningful fitness activities for a lifetime, from the very young to the elderly. Swim lessons and physical education classes allow children the opportunity to learn an invaluable life-saving skill. According to the CDC, drowning is responsible for more than, more deaths among children ages one to four than any other cause except congenital birth defects. And among childrens one to fourteen, fetal drowning is the second-leading cause of unintentional death, only to motor vehicle crashes. Teaching kids to swim at an early age saves lives. The pool has also, the pool also provides year-round job opportunities for many of our students. Current students as well as students that have gone on to college and come back to work summer jobs. It is well-known that sports, competitive swim included, teach participants many life skills that can augment classroom learning. These skills include time management, conflict resolution, performing under pressure, dependability, accountability, and leadership. Athletes tend to perform better in the classroom due in part to the development of these skills learned through athletic opportunities. If we want high-achieving students, we need to keep athletics in our schools. It is my hope that you truly appreciate the value added through community and district access to a pool and the programming that it offers. Please, find a way to make the funds available to fix our pool for our kids and our community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sheila. Next up is Libby Donovan. And after Libby, Bailey Ratsburg is on deck.
Libby Donovan, 8405 Northridge Street, Milton. I'm a senior and as a student athlete who's been in the pool for twenty-plus years, I can attest to all the activities that we heard in Milton pool shutdown. I have the privilege to lifeguard Special Olympics swim practices every summer, exactly as one of the most hardworking people I've ever known. Milton School generously brings out the pools as the organization is not funded and most athletes cannot afford to be paying such fees. Neighboring districts have denied their request for free pool usage, offering them pool time for around $240 a week. Despite the deteriorating conditions, serving all levels of swimming solidifies the pride and moral compass of the Milton community. Growing up, I participated in swim lessons, wrecking most of my swim teams, and high school swimming. After countless hours spent in the Milton High School pool, I can confidently say those hours have shaped me into the individual I am today. I learned leadership, hard work, and responsibility in the pool. Now, graduating from Milton High School this spring, I will be leaving the program as an academic All-American, academic All-State recipient, four-time VAS All-Conference iron, and will be swimming at collegiate level at UW Stevens Point. It would be a shame for future Red Hawks to not have the opportunities for achievement in the pool like I did.
Okay, thank you, Libby. Next up is Bailey Ratsburg and on deck would be Shayna Ratsburg.
Hi, I'm Shayna Ratsburg. I'm a seventh grader here at Milton-Schmidt School. I'm here tonight to share with the board and the community the impact the pool has had on me. The pool was where I went first for a birthday party, where I learned stroke development and water safety, where I joined my first swim team, where I made new friends from our community and others around us, where I experienced great success and felt the peace. The pool is where I continue to swim, where I hope to represent Milton and high school in two years. But just as important and as a success I have had in the pool, or life lessons that I've had taught me, including self-abundance, the value of hard work, teamwork, self-discipline, happy life choices, perseverance, time management, and the courage to go up here and speak in front of everyone. Finally, when I think about the possibility of the pool closing, I'm upset not only for how it will impact my direct future, even possibly changing my high school path, but also for the younger children who may not get to the same experiences and lessons. Please consider carefully the solutions to the pool. It is more than just a faculty.
Okay, thank you, Bailey. Next up is Shayna Ratsburg.
Hi, I'm Shayna Ratsburg. That was my daughter. I apologize for her. Hi, I'm Mrs. 4331. Again, that was my beautiful daughter who just spoke. She talked about how the last five years have affected her with the pool. I'm going to tell you a little bit how the next five years are going to affect her. The immediate impact if the pool closes will be on our community. Right now, my daughter and her team practice in the pool in the AM. They would have to look for other options in communities around here. Our friends and family use the lap swim. They will either have to go to outside communities or lose the exercise option completely. Her friends that are on Milton Rec and USA will either have to go to outside communities to join their teams, breaking that sense of community that currently have in Milton for, and the family that those programs have provided down to be part of any of those stories. And then the friends that are in high school that have a lot of power and are just folk are going to have to wait and see what their options are going to be. And these are just a few of the immediate effects. But on our family, we have a couple, we have a year to decide. And what it means for us, because we live way out on the river, we're consolidated family, we live so far to Jamesville. And to be honest, we have a choice. We can make an open, we can make an option up in a row. And it might be in reality for us, because my daughter's a pretty good swimmer. She was Wisconsin's Silver of the Year for three seasons in a row. She's bringing Wisconsin swim in the Air Force Group. Reality was scholarships and options for college are not only based on the fact that she's a really good student, she's also a really good student, or swimmer, and they're combined, and athletics and academics swim together. And she's right, was also she went in the pool. She came from a little tiny school, didn't work in two twenty, were not from Milton, but never had a pool growing up. She learned that in the pool. I threw her in a stream of nuts. She looked, she looked good. But she came amazing and lovely because of it. The pool has so much meaning to me and I'm not from here. Five years has become so important to our family. So I know our family, one family, she's one student. But as you move forward, you're making these decisions on all of the facilities. Remember that it's more than just that. It impacts directly, it impacts the community, and it's more important than just one thing. Thanks.
Okay, well, thank you, Shayna. Next up is Danielle Kramer and on deck would be Lance Fenna.
Hi, my name is Danielle Kramer and I'm a sophomore at MHS and a swimmer for the MHS girls swim team. As not only an athlete but also a student at Milton, I have had the pleasure to partake in many experiences that this community and school has had to offer. Amongst those includes swim lessons at the pool, which is where my love for the sport began. Without the Milton pool, I would have never had the opportunity to find something that I love more than anything. The importance of swimming has opened many doors for me, including the opportunity to represent my high school at the state level, the possibility to swim collegiately, and the chance to volunteer swim coach in the summer. Again, without the Milton pool, I would have never have discovered a sport that has changed my life so drastically. You can never underestimate how much our school's facilities impact children and students in our community, or how much that impact means to them. I would just like to add one last point, and that is you cannot put a price tag on opportunity. And the Milton pool is where I, along with so many others, have had the chance to thrive. There's no reason that this new generation of kids is any different than my own, and I truly hope that they will have the same options and opportunities as I once did. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Danielle. Next up is Lance Fenna. And following Lance would be Scott Evans.
Yes, I'm Lance Fenna, 2022 East Moon Home. It's actually a really nice area in there. Facilities is being used, you know. Our facilities do cost quite a bit of money and it's nice they're being used. The only thing I would have to say is if facilities are being rented or allowed to be used by other school districts that maybe we get a little more funding to help us out because we're supplying the facilities. One other thing is I've got a friend that has a very large indoor swimming pool at his house, and he said that he loses about an inch of water a week, and he knows he doesn't have a leak. So he's got air handling around there, but just to give you the idea, the evacuation rate is not yet. His concerns with buying the bowling alley, he was kind of surprised that you're interested in buying a thirty-year-old building. interested in buying a thirty-year-old building. You know, it seems like a fifty-year-old building is kinda the tipping point on you when you kinda wanna dispose of it. So, he says we're already past halfway on the length of the, uh, building. Um, he says that building's gonna have to pass ADA and safety and everything else, and the cost of restructuring and everything in that building may cost a bit. Um, he does blacktop, and he said that parking lot was horrible a dozen years ago. Um, he said that, like Ace Hardware just over the hill, when they redid theirs recently, they had to redo the whole gravel underneath. He said that the price could skyrocket when you have to change the foundation on that. So, moving forward and purchasing it, we better be transparent and know what we're getting into as far as entire costs that may be for years, years down the road on, uh, redoing the parking lot and what the real costs are before we jump into that. Um, does it really fit our needs and at what cost? You know, is, is it, you know, a good price for what it is? Um, and where has all the discussion taken place on, should we do it, couldn't we build our own on the school property or whatever? I haven't seen any discussion with that. So, uh, um, with that, I guess, you know, I grew up in the school district, some people didn't, and they still don't live in the school district. You know, I'd say unless you got a dog in the fight, you know, you should, uh, kinda keep your mouth shut on something. But, uh, thank you.
Okay Lance, uh, next up is Scott Evans. And following Mr. Evans would be Lynn Matthews.
Hi, my name is Scott Evans, thirty-nine, fourteen, Capella, Jamesville, Wisconsin. Um, I was a high school swimmer, and I know my wife was as well, so it's something that, you know, we both grew up in and really enjoy as well. I'm a parent of two kids in the district, and they've been swimming for Milton Marlins this past season and last summer. I'm swimming a great activity that I feel good promotes a healthy lifestyle. My kids have grown as swimmers, too, they work on the team, and they guide the coaching staff and student volunteers. I know they've made friends and acquaintances that they never would have outside of the program. Feel like they've learned a life skill, uh, the benefits of hard work, the importance of supporting their teammates, and following through on their commitments. I hope that by listening to citizen comments tonight, the board will see how important the pool is and our athletic facilities for district families, make them a priority when deciding where to spend this, um. I'd also like to speak to the issue of spectator safety. Uh, my children have a grandmother, who likes to attend more of their events, uh, the pool spectator area, the times they're slippery and hazardous for. Um, I know we, we were there to meet the other night, sitting in the front, there were all waters, like, coming all the way up, like, under their feet, you can't, can't set anything there. You know, it's not the only place that I worry for safety. Um, I know she came to see my nephew play football, and she tripped on the stairs going up. You know, there's railings and having to go up those stairs, there's no other way for her to get there, to stay down on the ground level and watch the game. You can't see anything because you're, everybody's standing in front and it's fun with her to go. Um, and unfortunately, she hasn't gone to see my, my nephew play again. So, and again, my wife and I chose to make this our home in Milton. Submitted a strong commitment to the academics. We did the same thing, research. I lived in Jamesville before, purposely moved to Milton, uh, or looked for a house in this district, uh, you know, on purpose. And I was waiting for, my wife was a teacher too. And I just want you to consider how important, you know, the swim program is and other athletic are to people, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Evans. Uh, next up is Lynn Matthews, and following Lynn, uh, it says the Benson family. Uh, and there's three of them. Uh, so right now, we had Lynn.
I'm Lynn Matthews, uh, I live at forty-four-sixty-five Oak Hill Drive. Um, I am an Olympic and Milton alum, and now I'm raising my two daughters, um, in the Milton School District. I came back here because of my experience here. So like Sheila was mentioning, if you step foot in our pool, you notice all the pictures that are lying on the wall. Those are all stories, some pretty incredible stories. No other pool, no other facility have I ever gone to, to see that mass of, of stories trying to be told. When I think about the Milton pool, I think about family, I think about leadership, pride, and opportunity. So five years ago, I became part of the swim family. My daughter now has been swimming for five years, and now my youngest has started. Um, and I was that very timid parent that came in having no clue what those grid lines on their arms and legs and numbers meant. And I had parents taking me under their wing to teach me what all those things were. And now I find myself doing that to all their new parents. And it's a fun, it's a fun feeling, it's, it's very satisfying to see that. The families that you see here are incredible. I have never met such amazing people, and I've been in different organizations. This is truly, this is our family. Everyone, those kids helping each other. The leadership, and look at all these kids here, our, our current swimmers, our past swimmers, the work ethic, the time management skills that they have. That's because of athletics, or any kind of organization that a kid may be in, you have to know how to balance, and these kids are way automatic. I don't know how I could have done that at their age. The other part that I love seeing are these kids going around and helping the little guys, whether it's helping them with their stroke, or helping them get that gondolon right, or that swim cap, it's all twisted, they're all there to help each other. Pride, if any of you have ever gone and swimmied, it is amazing. My first swim meet was five years ago. It is fun to watch everyone come together, not just cheer on your own child, but to cheer on any child. And especially, the kids that are struggling a little bit more. I'm a special educator, so I always have room for the underdog, if you want, might wanna say. And the sense of, the, the feeling that these kids get when they're coming in, trailing at the end, and everyone's cheering them on. The opportunities, the lessons, the, the jobs, the scholarships, the lifelong skills. So when you're thinking about the pool, the pool and our next conversations, think about these families and how it's going to affect them.
Okay, thank you Lynn. Uh, next up is the Benson family. Uh, Larry, Cindy, Samantha, Carissa, and Connor, three of which would like to speak. So just state your name and proceed.
I'm Chris Benson, I'm fourteen, and I'm a eighth grader at Milton Middle School. The pool is important to me because that is where I first learned to swim. If you take away the pool, you don't be able to learn the basics of swimming. Over the past four years, I've spent so much time at the pool and in my work for something I love to do. Also, I've made many friends that possibly wouldn't know if they were in person. Also, some people are very busy and wouldn't be able to drive to communities around for swim team or lots. And lastly, in the future, I've considered becoming a lifeguard for jobs, but I wouldn't be able to if it didn't count as pool. The pool is so much, many of us teens don't pay it off.
Hi, I'm Chris Benson, and I'm twelve-year-old, I'm a sixth grader at Northside. Please don't take away the pool that has brought, please don't take away the place that has brought so many memories and enjoyed the moment. I mean, if you look at the photographs on the pool wall, there are so many smiles that brought the whole community to dance. Swim is the only sport I do that I actually enjoy doing. I always, I always support to swim. I get to see my friends and coaches. The pool is the place where I laugh and smile the most. The swim team is definitely my favorite family. We always have a great time. I first learned to swim at the Milton Pool at swim lessons. If the pool closes, there won't be any swim lessons or possibly no swim team. If Milton doesn't have a pool, younger kids won't have the opportunity that I did. My parents have always enjoyed being active swimming and watching us. They are always so supportive. I am unsure many others would be devastated if the pool closed, so please don't take away the joy of pool.
Hi, my name is Connor Milton, I'm Monday Miller, and I'm a fourth grader at Milton. If the pool closes, there will be no swim team, and that means I don't have friends. I have loved going to office swimming. I've had so many good memories, I will be devastated if the pool closes. I learned to swim better sometimes than they. But, because of the difficulties in our swim, we're all kind of looking back. If things need exercising, it's me who's like on the other end. If the pool closes, you'll all have to go back to your homes. If the pool closes, if the school closes, if the students want a chance, it's interesting to not possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Connor. There's at least two more Bensons who chose not to speak, so, thanks, thanks for all your, thank you for all your comments there, Benson Bailey. We'll move on to the next one on the list, and that's Rick Ale. Rick is up, and then followed by, on deck would be Harvey Smith.
Ladies and members of the board, if you'd like to speak, I'm a parent of five kids in this district, and I understand sports more than anyone. I have a, a swimmer, three hockey players, three lacrosse players, three basketball players, so I understand schoolwork, bouncing schoolwork in the sports more than anyone. Normally, I come in here and I sit and I listen, I learn, I absorb, but it's time for me to not be silent anymore. We need to focus on getting things done instead of talking about it month after month. We have major issues that need to be rectified, starting with fixing our pool, our track is important to our community and our students. We have security issues that this board has neglected long enough and needs to be resolved now. I'm tired of hearing that we are looking for the best plan while our kids are not protected from random people entering our schools. We had an operations referendum passed, and what are we using this money for? We changed the roadway at East instead of using the money towards ADA compliance issues. We are looking to spend money on leasing or buying an abandoned bowling alley instead of repairing our pool, fixing a leaky roof, or updating our HVAC units at the current schools. I would like to know where the money, where this money that community approved is being spent. We are worried about the flow of traffic into Shoal Brook Park instead of fixing the track at our stadium. We have spent money on surveys, signs, shirts to support the building of a new high school instead of spending the money on a more cost-effective way to add to the current high school to get the same end result. We asked if we could add to the current high school from an architect, and we were told that it would cost more to do that than to build the new high school without actually showing the community any cost or, or data to support such a claim. We have given the building of, of a new high school to one construction company instead of setting out for competitive bids from three local construction companies to get the best value for our money. We need to run this district like a business, make smart, effective business decisions proactively versus reactively. We boast about how our district is debt-free, but we have all the major, these major facility issues that should have been addressed throughout the years and not just waiting until things have gotten to this point. I compare it a lot to owning a business and keeping up with the day-to-day facility issues and keeping an active preventive maintenance schedule. We have dropped the ball, and I think that just building a new high school will not address the major issues, but then utilize the building that is said to be in poor condition as a middle school. Those issues don't fade away when we put middle schoolers in that same building. I understand your referendum has funds to make some updates, but that is no guarantee that everything you say that is failing will be corrected. Rick, we got your answer. We have not, we have not reached out to any local businesses to consider options of sponsoring our pool or our track or even a field house if they get the naming rights, such as the Perkins Stadium and UW White Water. There are options out there. Now let's roll up our sleeves and find options, not excuses.
Thank you Rick. Next we got Harvey Smith, followed by Michelle Staff.
Harvey Smith, three-fifty-nine, East Madison Avenue. After listening to the presentation on February twelfth regarding the athletic facility needs, I have a better understanding and appreciation for the varied uses of the, of the Hawk Zone, both by the school athletic departments as well as by the public. The acting said, "I oppose any proposed purchase of the Hawk Zone while there are greater needs identified in the twenty-fourteen survey that are still not met." Although Milton is considered to be a quiet and safe community, we must not ignore completing secure entrances at the high school, the middle school, Northside, and Consolidated. It would be unthinkable and irresponsible should a tragedy occur that could have been prevented. Also, the schools and other public buildings were grandfathered after the passage of the Americans with Disabilities Act. It is unconscionable that after twenty-seven years, it is, as a district, we are still not even compliant. There's been worry about streaming of the board meetings that for fear that there might be a possible lawsuit because they're not accessible to everybody. What about the fear of a lawsuit because the buildings are not accessible to either disabled students or maybe disabled parents? You have known about the status of the Hawk Zone for months. You should not feel pressured to make a hasty decision because the rental agreement is about to expire. Concerning the state of all athletic facilities, there should be brainstorming sessions and thorough discussion of ideas with all considerations on the table. I, as well as a number of people who have spoken in the past at the board meetings, have ideas about how these new issues can be addressed, if anybody's interested in listening to them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Staff. Uh, next up is Michelle Staff, uh, followed by, let me go down the list here a little bit, looks like Wendy, Wendy Koser.
My name is Michelle Staff, I live at six-three-three-one North Consolidated School Road. Uh, my husband's family has lived in the Milton area for forty-three years. He graduated from, um, Milton. Um, they're not here, I have three kids, twelve, ten, and eight, and they're not here because they are in the pool also. Um, we have been in the USA swim team for six years now, um, and my, my kids started the swimming program when they were five years old. My daughter did the Milton Mile when she was four years old, so we have a history with the swim team. Both my older son and daughter qualified for the USA State Swimming Championships last week, where my daughter received a thirteenth place in the two-hundred-and-three and a fourteenth place in the five-fifty back, representing Milton. Sheila outlined all of the, not just the swimmers that used the pool, but the community that used the pool, and my husband and I have been at so much of the pool that last year he, um, became a US swimming coach. So I just want to tell the board, please invest in our kids' future, into our community, and invest into our, into our pool and into our school. Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you for your comments. There was Michelle. Now we're up to Wendy. Can you pronounce her last name?
Koser.
Koser. Okay Wendy.
My address is five-one-two-three North Lane Street. I'm currently in the pool, I'm just waiting. My daughter started swimming when she was three years old and started a competitive swim team when she was five, when, in September, when she started at Consolidated in kindergarten. She is now in eighth grade, and she is looking forward to high school swimming. When she was very young, she also wanted to be one of the big girls when she was five and six. I'm hoping that not only will she be able to have her academic fulfillment reached at Milton High School, but her athletic fulfillment reached, because as it was pointed out earlier, and I don't want this option, but my daughter has actually brought it up all year, that there is school choice. I think Milton education is extraordinary. My daughter has a 4.0. She has investments with many friends, and I would really hate to have that separation start in ninth grade. But she also would like to swim religiously, and that is also a thought that we have to give when we're looking at scholarships. She can have a 4.0 at any high school. I also have two young, a 4K and a kindergarten, who are going to come up in the school district. And if we don't fix the problems that we have now, what are they going to be like when these young children are in eighth grade? This problem has existed for a long period of time. I voted at the two referendum. I voted at closing Consolidated, wanting it to be closed. Please, don't close the pool. It means much to a lot of people. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Wendy. Next up is Joy Kennedy Sawyer. And following Joy would be Chuck Jackson. Chuck, you are on the deck.
Joy Carr, Avenue 44, Pennsylvania. The kids have wanted to talk with the other kids, so this is kind of impromptu, but when I first heard that there's a possibility of the pool closing, I mean, it's, I'm gonna cry. It would be devastating for our family as well. I mean, the kids have talked about it. The pool is their second family, you know, and to lose those relationships. We just moved to Milton three years ago, and it was the pool that gave us connections to the community. And it was the pool that they made their first friends. I'm not a swimmer, and I, the rest of the family takes on swimming, but just being the community that comes around at the pool, like I said, all the connections, all the friendships. And then it's not just about school. I mean, the pool and athletics obviously helps the kids focus at school. It helps kids decrease anxiety. It helps kids with deviation symptoms, reduce stress, you know, learn how to do time management. There's all these benefits to it, but it's also the community. There are lots of, you know, older community members that are water walking. You know, it's easy on their joints, it's easy with arthritis, it's easy. I mean, swimming, you injure one part of your body, you can still exercise with the other parts of your body. It's not like other sports where you get a kind of injury and you're out. And the pool is something for everyone that we can use all year long. It's just not one season.
The pool is a one facility that is open year-round and is used by the whole community. I moved to Milton in fourth grade. It's the first time our family has involved through community work with Milton High. Most of the people I met in fourth grade are still on bus rides now, and it's been eight and eighteen seasons. Swimming is a great way to be alive and social at the same time. It is also a very good aerobic exercise. Imagine the impact it will make on the community and how many lives it will attack. There won't be any swim lessons for little kids who are on basic safety necessities. And sometimes we'll be late to these, that all the lifting work. Swimming is a great sport. We learn teamwork and individuality. We also learn friendly competition. Like we may model like TAs, you can't always compare a time leader with a hand back, and that makes it difficult for your time to work early. We also learn how to help each other out. For example, we always help to push a group into the block. And we also keep the coaches to take a little group up when they have delays. And we make sure we're not a person. Everyone who has entered the town knows that it is an enjoyable place for everyone. Everyone in the swim team chooses each other out, and it has led to close friendships. I have so many memories of the pool. The memory of this pool is the highlight of my day in true confidence, second grade.
Doing swim is a way to look forward to everything with it. Doing swim made me get more friends than doing some also business in my confidence with swimming and my social life. Doing swim made me think anything was possible. I used to think time was hard because swimming made me think I can do it. And if you don't have a pool, people will be able to do swim lessons. And if they, and if they don't have the pool, where would they go? Would they just, where would they go? And what would you do with all the equipment? Would it just dry out because that's just being wasted? All of us have, all of us have made a lot of friends swimming in the pool. It's like a gathering family. If you close the pool, it makes us all really nervous. Swimming makes me happy. Swimming is also an aerobic exercise. Swimming helps people explore, ask, the pool is where you could, you could all hang out. I know a lot of people who are really sad it's closed. See, every year, more people join because they love swimming and they love the pool. If the pool, if the pool, everyone would be devastated. People, you would watch, you would have to buy it, and there would be no point using it. Our whole community has those memories of swimming.
Okay, thank you. Next, we got Chuck Jackson. Following Chuck, I believe Chuck might be our last speaker unless I missed someone that didn't sign up. And I'll, if I did, I apologize. He didn't sign, he didn't check the box. But anyway, no one to speak, Chuck was a good sign-on. So Chuck, it's all yours.
Hello. Chuck Jackson, Madison Avenue. I'm a past board member. I think that might be important to some people in the room as you listen to my comments. I was going to talk about board behavior, but I think the lady before me did an excellent job talking about that. I think it's a real issue. I think the board and administration needs to have some sort of conference, get-together, retreat, whatever you want to call it, and you guys need to get your act together. I appreciate the large turnout tonight. I think the board does. Unfortunately, this is something that just happens when we think we're losing something. You know, we're worried about the swimming pool. I wish that people had this attitude all the time, because you can go to different aspects of the school district, and you're losing something all the time. The board has to make value statements. They don't have enough resources. They have to pick things over each other. And it's important that everybody on this side of the room tells those people what your value statements are, because they're not necessarily coinciding. Thus, the first comment about respect and honoring everyone's opinion. I am a continual supporter of education. I do support this district. I do think they have problems. I was going to make a financial comment today. I decided not to do that. I do want to call out Mary Ellen. She gave me all the information I asked for. She gave it to me very plainly, very understandable. I'll just make the comment that the district is spending the equivalent of less than $500 for a $150,000 house when you look at maintenance. There's no way that the district can maintain their buildings at the level of spending $500 a year. You know, a lot of you people own a house. You pay more than $500 a year to take care of your house. The district is trying to do it. It's not appropriate, it's not possible. The obvious thing is yes to the pool, yes to the Hawk Zone, yes to the track. The district needs aren't the issue here, though. The issue is, is how did we get to this point? Where's the lack of planning? Where's the lack of foresight? Why are we here? The last board meeting, like I said, I came here to talk about attitude, but I was just as important or just as disturbed with the presentation. I might take more than three minutes, and I think I deserve it, but you can tell me I can't talk if you want.
Excuse me, you can have my three minutes.
The pool is a problem. It's a problem that's been-
We're not going to know, we're not going to go there. But Chuck, you guys have given two-
He's the only person who has the right to give me time.
Thank you, Chuck.
The pool is a problem. It's been exacerbated because we haven't fixed it historically. You know, at the last board meeting, one of the board members said that we have to talk about, how are we going to get a fix? We've been talking about this for 10 years. We have been talking about this for so long, so why isn't there a fix? Why would board, one board member talks about priority, we don't listen to them. We don't say, this is a real issue, we need a priority. I need a second. I need to know if you're going to give me a few extra seconds or-
We're actually, Chuck, you're three and a half minutes now, so I would respectfully ask that you-
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
So I want to offer a solution. I came here and talked when we had the referendum meetings, and one of the aspects of that meeting was provide solution, provide thoughts for the board. Very few people did that. They did the same thing that they did tonight. They got up and said, "We need the swimming pool." Everybody knows we need the swimming pool. The question is, is how are we going to pay for it? How are we going to fix it? Are we going to build a new one? My thought is that, you might not agree with me, but I think that the people in front of me as a group are dysfunctional. They're not coming up with solutions. I think you need to go to CPAs, the CFOs, the small business people of the community. Form a committee. We don't need a committee that's going to tell us that we need a new school, we need to do this, we need to do that. We need to form a committee that's going to say, this is how we can present the issue to the community. This is how we can solve the problem.
Thank you, Chuck. Thank you for your comments.
I just want to say one thing. There's a sign above that door back there. It says, "Learn from the mistake of others. You don't have time to make them yourself."
Okay.
I think that's what you need to do.
All right, thanks, Chuck.
Thank you.
Mr. Natten, even though he didn't sign up to speak, you're certainly welcome to speak.
I'm Jim Rodden, 1350 East St. Road, 592201 North Vincent Road. I run a business here. I have my phone here, and I own other properties. I have $750,000 plus in real estate in this district. I've had kids who've graduated from here. I reject, I objected to this bowling alley deal in the beginning, and it told you it sounded like it was made up and something was going on because of the way it was rushed, didn't you? That bowling alley is assessed at $498,000. And you want to go spend money for a bowling alley that's like to say is 30 years old? I can't say that you sport when you have all these other problems. Everybody here knows about the problems, but you want to go out and spend another $498,000? And I'll be honest with you. If you want to have sports, make them pay for it. I know the people here aren't going to want to hear that, but that's what you have to do. You got to pay for it. You want to go to swimming, it's a hundred bucks, forty bucks, three hundred bucks. I don't know. But you can't run this for free when we don't have the money to pay for it. You've got all these people, I don't know how many it is. What would you say, 20% of the students in all the schools that go in sports? I want to know what that number is. I don't want somebody to tell me.
Fifty-two percent of high school students played sports last year.
Fif, I said all of the schools.
Fifty-two percent.
Fifty-two percent of all the-
Probably higher, because I think most of those younger kids are playing sports, I would say.
I find that doubtful.
It's a high, it's a high percent.
It's a high number, 33% nationally, but that doesn't matter. I just don't think it's the right way to run a business, because I already run a business. I've had a quarter to fifty-five million dollar commission of a company, and I can't believe the way you spend money here and let things go to waste. Your schools. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Natten. Again, with anybody that didn't sign up to speak that I didn't call on, if I didn't call on you, I apologize if you didn't sign up to speak and you wanted to speak. You got one more? Did you sign up to, did you sign in?
I wrote my name, but I forgot.
Okay, come on up. And I think with that, that'll be our last. We have one more back here. Okay. And we have another one here. Folks, we do have a really long agenda today. We're last lady on the agenda. So I appreciate your comments. I would just ask, did you keep them brief, particularly if they're redundant?
I'll make a point. My name is Amy Kenyon. I am a student, former student, Milton Schools. I was a head athlete at their school. I have taught in Milton School District now for 18 years, and I'm now the school's head coordinator. I just wanted to say, all these comments and all the people that are here, it's great to see you all here. One comment I just wanted to make was that for all the naysayers that say athletics don't matter to students, it doesn't matter to students, it does. Okay, athletics keep a lot of students in school. Because many students have, I think, that keeps our graduation rate up, and education is what matters. So if you think that athletics and facilities have nothing to do with that, you're wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. And I live, Peggy is back there. Peggy? And again, we do have a long agenda. We welcome you to stay through the whole agenda.
I think I'm the oldest one here. I'll be 84 in here 37 years. I love this community. This is family, right here. You're all family. And we need to talk about a lot of things. My profession was physical education, but I never taught full-time because the three full-time teachers were younger, so I had to do something else. I was a super sub, as they say. And here's one of my teachers that I subbed. So we can say, oh, no, you're wrong. But anyway, my profession is swimming. I wish I'd kept a record of all the people that I've taught how to swim in my lifetime. I mean, it's into the hundreds. How many do not know how to swim in this room? The human man, Inter Sledge. He was the old classifieds. He, he'd get in the boat and then shoot. Anyway, everybody has to know how to swim for your own safety and for all of your children and grandchildren. And where do you think you're going to do it? Before the high school pool, you had Clear Lake, which ironically, I live at now, next to Silver Popular's Beach. That's where they taught the children how to swim. It was miserable. Seaweed, fish that bite your hind end. And so we built the pool. Built the pool, but built what? Sixty-three, in 1963? It leaks. It needs money, and it doesn't need any more money poured in the water. We need a new pool. We can talk about what we need, but how are we going to get it? We can talk about what we need, but how are we gonna get it? I would like to form a committee, and I've been talking to school officials, and I think they think I'm blowing through my head with steam. But I do have some money saved, and I would be willing to put some of that money towards a new pool. So listen to me, and listen to our committee, and let's get the ball rolling. Last point, a last thought. Almost everybody in here has benefited from our pool and our teachers, and I hope to God we can honor Coach Leader before he dies. The complex should be the leader facility with, and I'm thinking, I'm going fast and hard. This has gotta have a retractable roof. And call it the Coach Leader Pool. I can think of no one that we can honor more than him. So let's get started. I will put some money forward, and let's... I would guess, I bet you there's not one person in here who wouldn't give at least a dollar towards a new pool. Am I right?
Thank you, Amy. This'll be our last public comment. I'm not speaker here, so bear with us here.
Hi there. My name is Alissa Hart. I live at five one two eight North Northwood Trace. I didn't expect to follow that. That was fantastic. I wear a lot of hats in this district, and I wasn't sure if I was gonna speak tonight or not, because I wanted to make sure that I had something different to say to the board tonight. I'm a teacher. I am a parent of an eight and five-year-old daughters who love swimming more than anything else in the whole wide world. I'm a proud coach. I'm so proud and moved by the number of my swimmers who came up here tonight. I run the Milton Row Swim Team with the help of a few other moms. And I spend three to five nights a week on the pool deck, when there's meets involved, too. And I love every minute of it. And it's not always easy, because as I said, I teach full-time, I'm a full-time mom, but I will volunteer because of my love of that pool. I moved here in high school. I was a sophomore in high school when I moved here. I joined the girls' high school swim team. It started two weeks before the school year started, and that became my home. That became my new family. I walked in the doors of a high school that I had never gone in before with a team and with a family. And what that brought to me and what inspired me to give back, it's just, it's hard to put into words. I became a swim teacher. I became a lifeguard. I coached the Marlins when I was in college. I ran the pool as a head lifeguard for a couple summers. That pool put me through college debt-free, along with a couple other jobs. I made a few of those, too. But I want our students to have that same income potential. I gave back through those swim lessons and through that coaching, my love of swimming. I have eighth graders and freshmen coming to me already saying, "Can I coach for you this summer? Can I coach for you next year?" And that brings such joy and such a smile to my face, because I know that I've been able to pass on to them something that they just can't wait to pass on to someone else. My eight-year-old asks me, "Mom, when can I teach swim lessons? Can I help you coach tonight?" Because she loves it, and she wants to pass that on, too. So that was my hopefully different angle tonight, was let's allow our swim community, our swim family, to be able to pass that on to another generation whose picture will go up and line that wall. Um, thank you, Shelley, for attending to swim meet. My husband invited everyone to, um, attend our last swim meet. We had a hundred fifty swimmers. We had, our team sits in a storage room. The visiting team sits in a locker room. And parents find any space they can stepping out into the hallway, um, because we love the sport, and we want it to continue. So thank you very much for your time.
Okay, well, that concludes item number five of the public comment. I wanna thank everyone for your, uh, your comments. As always, we take your comments under advisement. We hear you. We do listen to you, and we do appreciate your input. Uh, we do have a long, a long agenda, so we're gonna continue on with item number six. And that is our student council report. So we have two, uh, high school student council representatives, Mr. Hartenee and Ms. Quatie, so I'll turn it over to our students.
Um, so lately, the student council's been focusing on Winter Neon Dance, which is this Friday. So we've been focusing on making posters, letting students know what's going on with that, and that's what I mean. Thank you.
Then outside of that, we've been working on with the administration to create a, some sort of survey or forum to get more student input like we've seen here tonight, to encourage that, and help make tangible changes in our school and community.
Okay, thank you, uh, students for that, uh, that student council report. Uh, we're gonna continue on with item number, uh, seven, legislative issues.
Okay, I can talk about this. I'm gonna just talk about the things, the number of things I could talk about. A number of bills passed, uh, by the Assembly. I'm just gonna talk about the things that could possibly affect Milton. One of the things that I think was a good thing, a deeply, profoundly violation. Another bill that passed this summer was called the Teacher Protection Act. It was a bill that school associations were against, because it would, it would deal... The problem sounds good in theory, but it would put, uh, teacher or student's privacy at risk. Uh, it passed the Assembly, but there's no companion bill in the Senate, so I believe it's gonna die. Uh, the bill's gotten from where it started, so it's a good thing, because it would have some issues with privacy laws. Uh, another, uh, thing that happened this summer is we expanded the CAP program, which if we wanted to... The CAP program is like, um, where we have our, uh, our students taking classes for college credit. If we joined the CAP program here at Milton, our teachers would have to, we put money in so our teachers could get certified if they wanted to, to be a college professor, meet the college standard. New Orleans, Oshkosh has that standard, and it services many schools around the Oshkosh area. But it could be, it could be, uh, expanded to come to Milton. Now, we all, we already have a college test that students can take, that they pay money for. Uh, in this CAP program, the students would have to pay money for it, whether they have to take a test. But it require, uh, teacher training. Teachers learn to do that. So, but that's a possibility down the road, if that's something that we wanted to, uh, to, uh, talk about. Um, there were people talked about how Milton wastes their money. I can tell you this. I listened to five hours of schools who need extra aid, because revenue caps have decimated the way they can take care of their schools. They haven't been able to even do routine maintenance. And so as varsity got passed, passed the Assembly, whether it passed at the Senate, that is to be seen. Some of these schools are very close to closing their doors, because revenue caps hurt their limits on what they can spend, and so that's a real problem. So I'm gonna stop there, because I don't wanna take too much time.
Don, I guess my question, I read with interest in a recent report, within a month or so ago, the Wisconsin State Journal reported the one proposed legislation which regards to low-spending districts like Milton. In fact, they cited Milton. What is the status of that legislation? Additional aid potentially available if that was to go forward for low-spending districts?
Well, we would qualify for that, but I tried to give amendment added to that legislation, because if you've had a failed referendum in the last three years, you wouldn't qualify for that.
Okay.
We'd have to go to referendum to see if we could accept the aid, because there would be some cost to accepting that aid. So, um, it's not passed the Senate, but it's a possibility. But because of the failed referendum, uh, we wouldn't qualify at least this time for that aid.
Okay. Other members of the Legislative Committee, um, anything else they had to legislative issues report? Hearing none. Thanks a lot, Don, for the, the report. Uh, okay, next up is one of my favorite items on the agenda, as always. It's, uh, item number eight. It's Red Hawk Recognition, and I would ask Mr. Sager to, uh, to comment on that.
All right, so today we have a, our special guest is Sean Hartenee II. And he is, uh, the reward or the award recipient tonight of our Red Hawk Recognition for his recognition as a good citizen by the Janeville chapter of the Daughters of Rednecks Evolution. So congratulations to Sean.
Okay, we're gonna move on to, uh, item number nine, which is the Human Resources Committee Report. That's you, lucky.
Human Resources Committee met on Friday, February sixteenth. Uh, two items on our, uh, agenda in open session were an update on teacher handbook. Um, just to remind the board, we were waiting, um, until the, uh, board policies were approved last year. And since then, Chris Stupadork, our HR coordinator, has been working on those, um, updating our teacher handbooks to, um, mandatory policies. Um, we expect to have a draft proposed to the HR committee possibly by April or May. Next item on our agenda was an update on teacher compensation, language, and communication schedule. Chris and other administrators, Susan, as well as Tim, have been working on, um, doing some work on the, um, communicating regarding the professional development piece of the teacher comp model. Um, Chris's group has also been working on contracts for, uh, teachers for next year. Uh, the board willing to, uh, discuss negotiations at point in time as well. Have a, they have first meeting in March. And then we also discussed, um, cost projections, the cost projections and update on what those will be. So we went through that fairly fast, if there... Anybody care to Tom or Chris, if I missed anything?
Any questions for Betsy or other members of the, uh, Human Resources Committee? Uh, thank you, Betsy, for that report. Uh, we'll move on to item number ten, which is Finance Committee Report. Mr. Tom Luster.
Um, thank you. Uh, we met on Monday, February nineteenth at five o'clock to discuss the five-year capital maintenance and improvement plan, uh, as well as the vehicle equipment replacement plan. Um, I talked with Mr. Schatz earlier today and asked him if he could, uh, um, condense, uh, the PowerPoint, uh, presentation that we had to ten minutes. No, I'm gonna ask him to do it to five minutes. We all have the, the updated, um, five-year maintenance, uh, capital maintenance plan, dated two sixteen of nineteen, uh, two thousand and eighteen. Um, so, um, Mr. Schatz, if you wanna just go over the highlights of that.
Before you start, Mr. Schatz, I assume it's available on the website?
Oh, it'll be available on the website tomorrow.
Thank you.
Uh, thanks, Tom. Uh, like Tom said, we met last Monday for a very, uh, lengthy meeting, going through a very detailed PowerPoint of a lot of the details of this plan. But we try to keep it short tonight. Uh, so the funding of this plan, uh, just kinda give you a brief history, uh, so as of, all the way through two thousand thirteen, fourteen, the annual budget to maintain our buildings, and just kinda keep the status quo, was three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Annual budget from fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, uh, Tim and Marianne raised to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then with the successful passage of the operational referendum, we've been able to add more, uh, money into this budget for, uh, two thousand seventeen, eighteen, and, uh, the full's budget for eighteen, nineteen. Uh, moving on. Uh, the next slide just shows some previous, uh, dollars spent in fiscal years going back five years. I do have fifteen-year history for that, too, if the board would like to see, you know, how that's, what's fifteen years back as well. Going through the projects for, proposed for two thousand eighteen, nineteen. Now, while this, uh, document is a, a five-year plan, the only, uh, fiscal year for approval tonight is the projects for two thousand eighteen, nineteen. I was trying to mention that. Uh, for Milton East, we'll have no projects. Uh, Milton West, we would do phase two of updating the hallways and repainting the lockers. They're getting real rusty inside, so in lieu of replacing, we will paint them. Uh, replacing a outdated and obsolete clock bell and PA system, which would also add more zones, allowing for zone paging, that paging outside the building for, uh, security purposes. And, uh, parking lot and driveway addition through Lamar Park. That process, uh, we're at, we've got two approvals through the city so far, through the Park and Rep Committee, and we've also had our first go-through with, uh, Plan Commission. And all is well through that process so far. We have final approval of the plan from the City Council, hopefully on March sixth. Uh, to consolidate it, replacement classroom lines, uh, they're of non-functional harmony. We have no proposed projects for two thousand eighteen, nineteen. Uh, at Northside, we'll replace a broken-up, uh, front, uh, concrete front entry. Uh, we've been patching this in years past. We're at the point where it's too far gone. To continue to patch it, it's actually cheaper to replace the entire thing. Uh, the middle school, we'll, uh, replace our pneumatic controls and DDC. This'll be the last building to get through, and we will then be all, all current and, uh, back up to date with how we're controlling our buildings. And, uh, also replacing the clock bell and PA system there. Uh, that one is even more of a nightmare than West. And at the high school, we would replace, uh, flooring and cafeteria, and also repaint the cafeteria. That cafeteria is used, let's say, more than twelve hours a day for a lot of different purposes. And if you went in there right now, you could probably pick up a handful of floor tile. Uh, renovate the special ed restrooms to lower level. Uh, this one is a larger project. This would be providing three ADA restrooms outside of our special ed area at the high school, and also converting a teacher workroom into a second, uh, ID classroom. So this would be, uh, a definite significant upgrade for the special ed department there at the high school, especially when their, uh, ID students are gonna double by the end of next year, so. Good project there. And also, at the high school, resurface the six-lane running track and relocate the field events. Uh, that will, uh, be the same layout for the six-lane track, just moving the jumping events, moving, moving some things around to help it flow better, you know, still being a six-lane track, so. Uh, moving on, no projects here at District Office and none at Shilberg Park. And that, uh, will conclude the projects for, uh, proposed for eighteen, nineteen. Uh, this slide here kinda walks through the, we're gonna talk about the things and tool projects that I went through, was just over eight hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, leaving twenty-eight thousand dollars of contingency. Uh, one thing I do wanna point out is that a couple of these projects, we don't have firm numbers back yet. And if those firm numbers come back less than anticipated, we would move ahead with, uh, a couple other projects that I have slated for the following year, which would be a secure entry sequence at Northside and the middle school, so. Uh, and just real quick, I'll just do the vehicle and equipment replacement schedule, and I'll turn it over for questions. Uh, we would be going for two replacement pieces of equipment, one for two thousand eighteen, nineteen. I'm sorry, one for two thousand seventeen, eighteen, and one for two thousand eighteen, nineteen. Uh, the one for this fiscal year would be a, a new mower purchased for Shilberg Park, uh, purchased with funds through cost savings of the Shilberg Park parking lot project. And, uh, for two thousand eighteen, nineteen, it would be an additional, uh, maintenance truck that would allow us to continue to, uh, you know, add on to our solar fleet, hauling trailers and all that good stuff for activities, band, show choir, football, all that good stuff. So I guess with that being said, I'm gonna turn it over to you guys for questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tom. Um, any questions from the board members? Uh, we did, we did speak at length, um, during the Finance Committee meeting about the, uh, the priority of, uh, with any additional funds left to get some of those, uh, more important projects moved forward, uh, including the secure entrances, so, um, turn the term stats down a little bit, and, uh, and hopefully by the end of the year, we'll come up with, uh, funding where we can, we can bump those up on the schedule. Um, any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have one question for Stephen. Um, I had a parent today ask me about the, not, not the entrance of Milton West, but they said the back door of Milton West, they think was very secure. And they couldn't come tonight to speak about that. I'm, I'm not familiar with the back entrance.
The, the back entrance would be locked all during the school day, just like any other, any other building, I guess. They don't cover that.
Well, I don't either, because I wasn't, he just, it was a question that he just posed to me out of the room, and I just said I'd mention it tonight.
Yeah, you can definitely... Yeah, you can definitely give it that.
The front entrance has been redone, right?
Yeah, that one does have a secure entry sequence. That one was done this last summer.
I might just have that parent contact you, and you can talk to you, Chris, and I might be able to do that.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Tom. Any other questions?
I was just gonna say, just so it's clear, so, Tom, so the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to, I presume, have this board consider approval of the plan this evening? The five-year capital maintenance improvement plan and vehicle equipment replacement schedule.
That is correct.
And for those of you here, that are here this evening with regards to the track, just to be clear, that is embedded into the plan for after July 1st.
Correct, yeah.
Correct, at a cost of approximately $125,000.
Correct. That, you know, that you guys move forward with approval, that project will start the week after the 4th of July, and most likely wrap up the middle of August, you know, not going with weather.
Stephen, what's some other options came forward about the track in place of the six-lane track?
Well, you know, my thoughts are even if something does come forward, you still have to have something in the meantime. So this would at least, I guess, in my opinion, and handle too, working with Tim, by moving those field events, it's gonna help, you know, with some of the safety-related issues in the meantime. But, you know, this isn't gonna hurt the fact that, you know, we have removed board with a larger speeding project. This really wouldn't get me, I guess.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Other than, I just want to commend Stephen and all of his people. As I look at the investments that have been made over the past few years with a budget of $350,000 per year that increased to $450,000 for the past, for three years prior to the successful passage of the operating referendum, we did actually put into the school district $362,000 in the '14 year, $1,086,000 in '15, $811,060, $1,004,070. And that's before the referendum passes. So with $1,002,070, so I think they've been pretty efficient.
If there are other questions, I make motion to approve the five-year capital maintenance and improvement plan and vehicle equipment replacement schedule, specifically the items, projects outlined for the remainder of the '17, '18, '19, '10 year and the '18, '19, '10 year, as presented and discussed.
I second.
We got a motion from Tom and a second from Shelley to approve what he just said, the five-year capital maintenance improvement plan, vehicle equipment replacement schedule. As we all know, this is a fluid document. What we know today could be different. But anyway, that was the motion and the second. Any questions, comments, concerns, further discussion?
All right, I just want to ask Stephen one more question. So we put the $125,000 in the track, and we know that every year though, we're gonna have to repair it because of football being on it. I mean, we're gonna have to repair that aspect of it, right?
Hopefully, we won't have to repair it for at least a few years after this. You know, we're gonna try and do our best and maybe redo the way we do things internally. And maybe we can, I don't know. It's hard, because, you know, you're kind of...
There's only so much room there, but we're trying to do the best.
Stephen, correct me if I'm right, if my memory serves me correctly, it was about 20 years ago that we put the rubberized surface on that track.
Yeah, 1996 would have been when we installed the surface we just...
So it's lasted over 20 years?
Right. And, you know, talking with the experts on it, 20 years is about the life expectancy. So we'd be pretty good for the amount of people that have been on it.
Right. It gets the higher, it gets higher than normal use it or...
Well, in football game, a little over that, yeah.
Right. So, any other questions or concerns? Otherwise, we'll call the vote. All those in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Schatz.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Item 11 was stricken at the top of the meeting. So we're gonna move on to item 12, and that's discussion and possible action on an option. Stating terms for the purchase of the premises at 450 Zelt, John Paul Road in Milton, Wisconsin, which we refer to as the Hawk Zone. Some people refer to it as the former bowling alley. It's the facility that we've been having use of for the past two years. And so, Mr. Schager, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. The item, this next item that's on here, you have information in your packet. As you know, the right-to-use agreement ends the end of March. And the facility itself has been an asset for the last year plus for the school district and the activities that have taken place in that facility. We've discussed it numerous times, so the updates Brian's given, updates throughout the year, as well as others who have come in there to explain that not only the high school usage, the various community groups that use it. And when it comes to looking at creative solutions to try to address our facility usage, people talk about partnerships and in other ways. Here's one that's come along that's been an option for us to look at. And we're bringing forward the, asking the board to consider taking to the, a meeting of the electors to authorize the purchase of the premises of the former bowling alley, which we call the Hawk Zone. And so, we much have been talking about it over the last year. And so now, in order to try to maintain a space, add to our limited space, actually be a continuation of our limited space, add to our footprint, this property. And so with that, I guess we'll open up to whatever the questions and discussions, et cetera. You'll see in the documents, the purchase price of $485. And you'll see all the different informations in your packet. And this would, of course, have to go to, tonight would not be the vote to purchase the building. Tonight would be the vote to authorize, to take this to a special meeting of the electors to authorize the purchase of the premises at the upcoming meeting in March.
I might add, for those of you that would remember several years ago, it was this very building that we went through a similar process with regards to a meeting of the electorate. So as Mr. Schager stated, it's really not a decision of the board. It would be a decision of the electorate. The proposed date is March 12th. What I'm getting at is we had a meeting like this years ago in the decision to acquire this facility, which we realized ever since. So that'd be a similar process.
Tim, I'm wondering if you can speak a little bit more on that $15,000 in electrical repairs? Is that something that's already been done or something that they're going to do prior to purchase?
I'm gonna let Brian come up and speak to some of the specifics of the building. He can answer that question in a more articulate manner.
Not known for articulate, but I'll do my best. That $15,000, when we were asked if we had a user, could use that building, said yes. And we had to understand it was completely cut. Things were hanging from the ceiling, all the light fixtures were gone, there were electrical conduits still on the floor, stuff like that. So there were really trouble lights just hanging from the top when I went in there first time. So I said, yeah, we could use that, but I don't have $15,000. The first bid was actually $25,000, someone put lights in there. I said, yeah, I'm gonna pay that. And he said, $15,000? I said, I'm not gonna pay that either, because I don't have that. And this was just dropped on my lap. We'd love to use it. And so backyard property says, well, hey, we'd love for you to use it too. So here's what we're gonna do. We'll put that, we'll put those lights in, we'll pay for that $15,000 upfront. And at the end, we'll just say it's $485 plus the $15,000 if you decide you want to purchase it. We say we don't want to purchase it, he's got $15,000 of lights that he's putting there for the next... Is that kind of...
It does. So I guess kind of the presumption then is if another business came in there, they perhaps would not have done it. Is that correct?
Right. They sold it back at the time, there was a sold as... But to get it so we could use it, he was the one that said...
So when I went down and looked at it, I asked for your tweets ago. I looked at what, I kind of asked just what would need to be done in there. Obviously, some rubber manning we were looking at, where some of the holes where the nets been, files have gone through the net or things like that. But they said that we're putting it in there now because we didn't know what kind of that was gonna be. Is there any other updates that need to be done besides cosmetic? Mention of ADA, would that be in compliance with all of those types of things?
My understanding is, I have to talk to Howard, but my understanding is that we can move in as we're using it right now. No change. The other updates kind of things that you may talk to him about, I think most of it would be any cosmetics. But we'd probably put in some extra bedding mats, you know, you stand on just to protect that, some backstop mats. We'd probably put the turf down permanently, instead of tacked it down right now in case we were gonna have to pull it out. So, yeah, just a few things like that. I don't think initially I would do, I would have much of anything else done in it. I'd wanna get in there and use it and then start renting it out.
And you know if we'd have to do any more drywall running around the one end or any of that type of thing? Or we're just gonna leave it?
None of that's gonna improve the usage of the building. I mean, we can make it look nicer, but I don't know if our kids really care what it looks like. They're in there swinging or whatever the activity is.
So, Tim, if this were to go to electric, an electric, electric, what, wrong to say that word? Electric? Yes. Where to approve the purchase of this, this $500,000 isn't in the firm budget. Where would that, where would that sum of money come from?
Like many of the projects, when they are, we look at them, we look at the end of the year, see where our spending is at. And when there are unused portions of the budget, for example, if insurance rates are coming better than expected, that's an example of unspent monies. They're budgeted but unspent would be a combination of that and fund balance would be the combination where it'd come from.
So we take it from the fund balance where we have, like, well, it's around $7 million now, I think?
Correct.
So that, that in turn would obviously impact our borrowing, the amount of money we would have to borrow in the fall, which would increase obviously our interest.
Potentially.
Tim, I'd like you to comment on, so, well, the way the offer is drafted up, and it was reviewed by our legal counsel, William Beatty of Boardman &amp; Clark.
Correct.
The closing, if the electorate approved it on March 12th, would require a closing by March 31st.
Correct.
So to piggyback on what Brian was saying, the two options, or maybe there's a third option, I'd like to at least have consideration or made some discussion on, is unspent money, which at the end of March, we got the end of April, end of May, we got another 90 days to the school year. So unspent money dipping into the fund balance. Would a third option be a potential short-term borrowing?
That could be a potential option as well.
And I throw that out there for consideration as opposed to dipping into the fund balance.
Right. And I should just point out that for the past, I don't know, two years, we actually run a deficit in our budget. So I don't want to count on unspent money, because we don't have a history in the last couple of years of having that. Yeah. I guess, I'll just, I'll just come out and say my opinion, and I think everybody's probably pretty much aware of what my opinion is, is we have a lot of needs, and a lot of people have already kind of commented the same thing. I think it's very irresponsible for us to take any borrowing or taking any money out of the fund balance to purchase this facility when a half a million dollars could go a long way to improving the swimming pool. It could go a long way to secure entrances. So to me, it doesn't make any sense for this district or this board to set in motion a borrowing of a half a million dollars on a facility that, you know, if we don't have that facility, yeah, we don't have as much practice time, but it's not like a pool where we don't have anything. The athletes that are in there do have other options, whereas a pool, they don't. Security, somebody comes in, there is no other option. So for me, I would say I don't think we should go forward with bringing this to the electorate, because I do think with a half a million dollars, it could be a lot better spent in other priorities.
Has there been any costing for a new building if we built a new one? That would be similar space and size?
There's not. We've obviously looked at other options like referendum and other things, but no. Again, when opportunities come along, we assess, you know, it wasn't in our, in our plan to build a building like that. This one has come along. And so it's an opportunity that we have, we have assessed the usage of it over the last year to see how much of an asset it would be. And based on the amount of students that use it, as well as community groups, we believe it would be an asset to add to the school district funding on a permanent basis. And of course, being located could be sold in the future. If it's ever rendered, then we do not need that property if something else were to come along, referendum passage, et cetera, that we may not need it. It is a property that could be sold and does have access to John Paul.
But Tom, just can you bring it back? One time you looked at that as a possible access point, that we built a school there. So we would now own that property.
We'd have our own needs with the John Paul.
Which we didn't have before.
Correct.
Those are a couple of things I have in my notes here. I think you kind of hit those there, that I want just to consider and make your decision. One was about the safety of our kids, you know, that is an important thing. It's a much better setup, because that's now a setup designed for that versus getting around gymnastics equipment or those kinds of things. I think the location you mentioned that joins to our property. Flexibility that that building is indoor space, and all we've done is put turf and nets in it, that if that needed to be a different use for the district, it's a, it's a pretty, pretty open blank canvas, so to speak. At that point, we'd probably then have to fix it up for whatever that need would be. But it has that ability. You know, it has a potential for revenue. Sam Martin talked earlier, he didn't say where he got up by 3:00 in the morning and went to practice, taking skating lessons and stuff, but I think that was Kenosha or Racine?
Racine.
Racine, okay. So that's where kids are going there to work out. So there are people and teams looking to rent that stuff, that kind of space. One thing I also wanted to, and Tim said this too, but, you know, resale value. Bob talked about how this building was purchased in a similar way. I think of what it would be like if we tried to sell the middle school. I don't know who'd want it and what they could use it for. Again, this is a metal building that could be used for a lot of different things. And I think it has a lot more flexibility and potential for resale value. And also mentioned, you know, that we were kind of told to go out and try to make partnerships, create some partnerships with businesses. And that's kind of what I tried to do with this case. And we have lots of partnerships with people that don't have any money. That's not helping us. Here's a partnership with someone who wants to work with the school district and is willing to, and brought this to the district. And I think we'd like to continue to work with the district moving forward. So try and, yeah, try to go out and build some partnerships with some larger businesses and corporations. And I guess right now, it's just a chance to do something for the kids right now. We waited three years without telling you that our athletic facilities are in rotten shape, because we were waiting for the next referendum vote, and the next referendum vote. And it doesn't look like that's coming. So now here we are, we are in last board meeting, and I was able to at least share with you what we have and its conditions. And there are a lot of needs. No one's gonna argue that. I mean, I went to Milton East and to the junior high, they tore it down after my class went through. And then, of course, Milton High School. Not much has changed in any of those buildings since I went through there. I mean, I graduated in 2011. So again, I guess it's an opportunity to do something now for the kids. It's probably an opportunity that's not gonna present itself again in this case. So it's your decision, I just wanted to put those, some of those business ideas out in front of you.
Well, I also think that, we've talked about opportunities throughout the evening, we've talked about the last three years. And Brian, right, we've tried some different options, we've tried some different things, so the community has chosen not to... options and tried some new things, so the community has chosen not to accept, and so there's another option, and instead of just saying we're gonna go do it, it's another option for the electorate to say, hey, either they value it or they don't. And like Brian said, I mean, we can, we keep trying to come up with different ideas, different solutions, and here's one that's right here now, and if the electorate chooses to take advantage of that, great, they don't, great, we just, again, it's an opportunity, and it's not on the board's shoulders per se, it's on the community to decide, is this something that, that they wish for the students to continue to have options for?
That's exactly right, Tim, it's the board's decision whether you wanna give you, the electorate, the opportunity to weigh in and vote on this, so, much like this building. So maybe I, my concern on the funding part of it is I won't be on this board after April, and so as we wind this school year down in May and June, when it's known what that unspent money is, that's an option. I would, I would encourage whoever the board is at that time to not, not consider dipping into the fund balance. So that would be my urge to this board is not to go into the fund balance to fund this. We have, if this goes forward, if the electorate says yes, we want it, it's a fair price, it's a good solution to some of our needs, athletic space needs, you'd have to close on it by March 31st, right? So you'd have to come up with the $485,000.
Well, and with that, we would take it out of existing budgeted funds.
Right.
And then we see where we're at the end of the fiscal year, and that's where it comes from.
And that's my point, I would urge the future board, future board, not to take it out of fund balance, to consider, well, first of all, hopefully there's some unspent money that we can use, if not, a short-term borrowing over a reasonable period of time. Short-term.
I would recommend too that if this board decides to put it to, or the electorate, that not only the board, but the electorate actually take an opportunity and go down and watch it being utilized. It's amazing, it's amazing how often that places you. Please plan on spending about a half hour there because the coaches will, will tell you how important and how valuable it is to their, to them as coaches and as well as the students, so, but I do highly recommend everyone go down and take a look at it while it's being used.
And there is that while it's being used, the other piece of this is that if the board chooses to take this to the electorate, that the actual vote will take place in that building, so anyone who comes to vote that night would physically see it, see if they're actually voting for. But you're absolutely right, you can go there, have time, and check that out for a half hour, interact with the coaches and the kids, you'll see the value that it does bring.
I would also like to piggyback off of what Tom and Tim said, that not only should the electorate go and look at the Hawk Zone, but I think they should also go and look at the pool, the facilities, look around there, go into the high school, look at the secure entrance, look at the secure entrances or lack of in the middle school in Northside, and then as electorate, you'll be informed whether or not, what's a higher priority, the Hawk Zone, the pool, the secure entrances, or what have you.
I would, I'd like to just come, I wish we could have the vote later in March, the people that actually see a baseball practice in the high school, when you, I don't think people really realize that in baseball, every team, a freshman JV varsity team, they have to cultivate, with pitching rules that they have today, they need to have six, seven, eight pitchers on their team, and if they did that, if they practiced pitching every day, that would mean they would have to use all the space in all three gyms for over an hour just to have pitching practice without the use of this other facility, because that's simply the way the rules are written. And we've talked a lot about safety here. Ever been in a gym when kids are throwing the ball from one side to the other? It was, it's dangerous. As a coach, I worried, every practice I had to go inside that gym, when we had a half a gym with 20 kids to practice and try to set up a pitching in one corner while the kids are throwing, and the wall's right behind us, the ball hits the wall, what's your first reaction? Throw the ball at you, kid turns around, look where the ball went, and hits him in the back of the head or in the face. So many times I saw that come so close, it was scary. So I wish that people could go, if we didn't give the Hawk Zone for practice, you know, then we're picking winners and losers here. It's safety, we're talking about safety as well. Somebody being eye knocked out, somebody breaking their nose, somebody being their teeth knocked out, it's safety as well. So I really would wish people, I think if they saw what had to happen during a practice, they, some people expressed surprise how many people used the pool tonight. I don't know where that came from, because we've been talking about the pool for a number of years. They should just go out and see what happens when a practice after school takes place, when you've got to figure out how many different, you've got softball, baseball, track, tennis, they fit into three gyms, and soccer. So I wish you'd come and help Coach Hamill do that.
Now, would they use that just in the winter months and in climate weather?
Uh, what?
For softball and baseball?
It depends upon the weather, you could get three days of rain and have to go indoor, so you could get, you know.
Yeah, just the Hawk Zone in general, I mean, so, my, my point, I guess what I'm making, and you know, you probably disagree, is if you don't have a pool, there's no alternative. You don't have a Hawk Zone, there's alternatives because it's an outdoor sport, and if it's in climate weather, well, one of the options is be in gym, or the other option is you just don't practice it.
Baseball.
What I'm saying, there's alternatives where, my, 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 there isn't for like a swim or for security. And that's something, and I understand where they disagree.
Right, and I, yeah, and I agree with you, Brian, on that. But what I'm saying, baseball and softball practice start on March 12th?
March 12th, baseball pitchers can now practice and softball.
The track is going March 12th?
March 5th.
March 5th, and soccer goes?
March 18th.
Yeah, so I mean, you could, they don't get outside for the month of March, per se. You've got all those teams that you have in attendance to put inside there.
Well, and real quick, Dan, it's also, it's not just baseball, softball. I mean, it's another, it's another facility for us to use, you know, there's always so many baseball, softball fields, but there's also other things that can be used, that space can be repurposed other times of the year as well. It's a very flexible classroom, in essence, and so it's not just for baseball and softball when the weather is less than ideal. It can be used as many other things, and so just to make sure people understand, it's gonna be a multi-purpose space should the electorate choose to allow us to purchase it.
And I think, and I think we could easily, we didn't want you to get it going here, I think we can easily raise the revenue from outside sources that come in from that facility to at least, at least pay our overhead cost. I'm not gonna stand up here and say, oh, we can pay $500,000 this year. And to Brian's point, you can't argue that if you don't have a pool, you don't have a pool. Can't argue that. So I, I think it's the board's and administration's job to figure out how we can make all of it work, how we can do the best all around for all of our kids, and get out of this, we gotta do this one and can't do that, we better figure something out. There's people that have ideas, some we like, some we don't. But our facilities are bad and they're not gonna get better, and we need something to be done, and we gotta start somewhere, I understand, but we need a plan. We've got lots of kids that are gonna go through their four years, and they're not gonna have a great experience athletically because of the facilities. We have some outstanding coaches, and really great people working with them, they're gonna make their experience really, really great.
And Tim, I wanted to say that, yeah, I was just talking about softball, baseball's one example of using that, and what people don't realize is that you can't scatter kids all over because you're liable, you have to be able to see what's going on. You go walk across to the other side and somebody gets hit on your side, you know this coach could be liable. And, and no coach wants to be liable for things they can't control.
And we're liable down when someone cuts their foot, I mean, we're liable when someone goes out the door, puts their hands over the crash bar and busts the windows. I mean, we're liable when we get up coming to school, so there's a liability in everything we do, I just hate for that to drive everything we do, because it's very emotional, especially those of us who have kids. So, yeah, there's liability, I think we're gonna try to do everything we can to be safe, even before the gymnastics room hit it. If one of the options is, is not to let kids practice, I think that option stinks. Okay? So we won't hold on to practice, but they'll be practicing at 9:30, which this meeting's gonna go to.
Hey, Brian? I don't wanna know names or anything, but have you had the experience of some citizens, community members come up and say maybe they would be willing to donate some, a portion of that $50,000, or, I don't know if they would come to go to you or if they might go to Tim?
Oh, the $500,000?
Yeah.
I guess I have not had anybody come up to me and say that they had an amount they could donate. I have been approached by someone who wanted to know what, what the asking price was in case the board didn't approve the, at least go to vote and didn't purchase it, the electorate vote. I don't, I don't, I can't assume that they were gonna, they would really be interested in purchasing it, but I have not. I did, I did raise quite a bit of money to put that turf in there and the nets from a couple of different sources.
I kinda equated this, we've had a chance to try out this facility for a year, was kinda like buying a used car, it's a used facility, we couldn't recreate this space, I don't think the square footage and the location for a price of $485 or less, I don't think. Acquisition of land, access, I think Shelley pointed out, if down the road it's deemed that we don't really have a use for it, you can at least consider selling it. So I don't think, I, I know, again, but I don't, as I said, it's an opportunity, again, it's the electorate's decision. So I think that's our, that's our responsibility, the electorate, something to consider.
I think long-term, Bob, that would be what I would plan, you know, my own mind, is that we're not gonna be in this building for a long time, hoping that we can come up with other solutions to some of our space needs that, those will take care of it, and then we, we sell that to the next, to the next user, and then maybe selling to someone for the exact same purpose, who knows?
Just to piggyback on the multi-use first when we're there, you can see the wrestling mats at the end, wrestling had been in there, I'm assuming football would be using it in the fall possibly.
Good job.
We have a straight, whatever, for stretching, for, you know, conditioning, those kinds of things, you talked about that.
They'd be, they'd be going up against, you know, soccer, I think, well, we would be, yeah, so we could have golf in there.
Golf in there, I was thinking too, yeah. But, so they, they said the track had been in there more, hockey had been there, all the different things, when they just don't have ice time or just, like I said, for conditioning. So does other uses besides just the spring sports.
Well, I'm gonna jump in here again. As a mom whose son has benefited from the use of the Hawk Zone and probably, hopefully will continue to benefit from that use, I see the, I see the benefit in having it, what I'm really wrestling with, so it's, it kind of puts me in a quandary, is the $500,000 purchase price. They're selling us this property for $485,000, which is only $13,000 under the assessed value, plus the additional $15,000 to the electorate that put into it. And I just have a real hard time spending that money, and I just, and I, like I said, it puts me in a real quandary as a board member as to, you know, is this something that I, that I can put my stamp of approval on? I've been in there, it's an awesome facility, my son participated in a baseball camp that was held there, he will be starting baseball practice there shortly, actually the 12th, at 5:30 in the morning, he will be there bright and early. And to speak to baseball, and Brian, you know, just don't full practice, unfortunately, baseball's a very short season, and they start, pitchers and catchers, they're practicing on the 12th, everybody else starts on the 19th, and that last Thursday, so the Thursday is spring break and Saturday are their first game.
I didn't say it was a good option, I just.
I know, I hear you. So it's a very short season, and, you know, to say, oh, sorry, it's raining for the fourth day in a row now, we can't go out and practice is kind of a sucky position for them. And I also get the whole baseball ball, you know, flying through the gym, hitting gymnastics equipments and.
I think the winds are expensive.
And things like that.
And that's why we're in the position that we are at, because things cost a lot of money, especially if you get the big ticket nights, and that's where, that's where it's difficult. And I was kinda thinking as well of that, you talked about the fund balance or short-term loan debt. Potentially that means if it's, that's no new tax money, it's old tax money if you dip into the fund balance, obviously, or if it's current tax money. But of course, the fight for current tax money is, is a tough fight, everybody wants that, so, but I still hope that something like this would be no additional tax, you know, it's an expensive, expensive, it's a heck of a lot cheaper than $69.99.
I guess my, just to emphasize a little bit more, because I'm hoping I make myself understood, and I know a lot of people are gonna disagree with me, but the thing that I really have a problem with is half a million dollars, we can buy the Hawk Zone, but yet, you know, a secure entrance to the high school, $450,000, and one member said the only way we're gonna get that is if we have a capital referendum. So we're willing to dip into our fund balance for the Hawk Zone, we're willing to have a short-term loan for the Hawk Zone, but we, we aren't willing to do that for a secure entrance for the high school, and God forbid anything happens like it did a couple of past weekends, but I would rather see an entire sports season of every sport canceled than see one student get injured or hurt because of some, you know, mentally unstable person going in there and having free rein.
I don't, I would hope you let get hurt in your house. You want to get hurt, you have the athletic director.
Right, right, and I, I wanna maybe to piggyback on that to emphasize, and I don't wanna get off the subject here of the Hawk Zone, but probably over the last eight years, I would estimate that this district has spent something above over a million dollars on safety issues. We do have, as everyone knows, keyless entries to all of our buildings, and that was back when Bernie Nicolay was superintendent, right, Tim? We're not perfect by any means, we have room, much room for.
Oh yeah, you have a back door to the high school, that's wide open.
Well, yeah, it's, it's pretty difficult to make all your buildings 100% secure. We can strive for that, but I would, I would put up the Milton School District against most any districts in the area, relative drier level of commitment to safety and security in all of our buildings.
So we put a lot of money and resources into the, into the safety and security, obviously our buildings are locked, yes, or it's a backyard by the high school, but we also remember that we're not shrinking like most of our neighbors, we're growing. And the more kids you add in the building, the high school is a perfect example, that's why you don't see backpacks, that's why if you walk into high school at all and school is in session, you will have a hard time walking through the hallways. At times, we have to make decisions, absolutely. We tried the last two years, we solved all these problems, then we passed referendum, but that didn't happen, and so now we gotta try other creative ways, but again, we're not ramming it home, we're saying, electorate, what do you think? Here's another opportunity that's come along to help kids and let them choose. If the electorate says, you know what, it's not a good use of that, or we don't want it, then so be it. But there are, if you look at our capital improvement plan, safety and security has been top priority, we've spent millions of dollars over the last few years, I know there's been articles in newspaper that have brought attention to that, but I would, I would choose to, I would challenge those to look around the other school districts that neighbor us, we have a lot more secure entrance ways and protocols than many of our neighbors, and so we put a high priority on there, and if, you know, the board chooses a different direction, so be it, we'll follow that, if the electorate says no, so be it, we'll figure something else out, if it's, you know, yes, we'll obviously use it and we'll continue to work on the safety and security. So to say that if this purchase is made, the electorate approves it, that we aren't gonna, we are ignoring safety and security is the furnishing from the truth. So make sure it's very clear, we prioritize that not only with our facility, but with our behaviors as adults and staff to make sure that we are looking and trying to track who's coming into our buildings. But also, don't lose sight, that we are adding kids every year, and that is putting pressure and stress on the facilities. This facility that we're talking about, seeking input from the electorate to purchase, gives us another place for kids to participate at times that are more appropriate, for kid-friendly, as well as a potential revenue source to help offset the costs, as Brian has mentioned.
So, so Tim, you said something that kinda confused me a little bit, because I believe when I read in the Gazette, that it stated that Milton was one of four school districts in the state that had a school that didn't have a. in, in the state that had a school that didn't have a, a secure, secure entrance sequence. And I'm trying to remember what that is, what that stated in the Gazette, but are you saying that that's not necessarily true?
Okay, but there's a difference between, there, we have obviously some sequences where you walk through a, into a foyer and then you're let in, and there are other places that, that have, you know, your front door buzzer. So, we obviously have secured entrances. It's what we've been looking to do is add the sequences, and there are a lot of schools around us that do not have that sequence, where you walk in and you're locked in it until you're buzzed through.
Are you really with the, the article I'm referencing?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So, so, if I, correct me, because I, I, I'm not really sure if I understand, there's a disconnect for me here. So, the Gazette said that there was, we were one of four districts in the state that didn't have, I don't know, you could probably state it better, like a secure sequence entrance where it goes into the office.
We don't have that entrance.
There is not, there, there's not only four school districts that don't have that in the entire state.
Do you know what it was, we're referencing as far as what the four, Milton being one that didn't have?
Well, we have, no, no, absolutely, I don't know that.
I'll, I'll, I'll get to the article, because I just wanna make sure that what you're saying and what this article's saying, you know, there's inconsistency there, and I wanna.
But you're, you're afraid to get a trial?
Yeah.
The, the Gazette, which I think casts some shadow of a doubt that we don't have a very secure district.
I haven't been in any secure, at least in this area, visiting as a spectator, where you would go directly into the office, they've all been buzzed in entrance ways. I know there's lots of schools that do have them, where they can't have the option of just coming in the hallway and not being able to have them come in directly through the office, but I have not been in any older schools that currently have those in the areas.
So, anyway, I was gonna talk about the Hawk Zone tonight.
Sorry, I'll be right.
No, I mean, they're all issues, and I think everybody's, you know, I think I can speak on behalf of most, if not all, of our building principals, is that we're waiting for some direction on some things. I'm not gonna stop bringing things to the school board. I've only got 613 days left, that's why I told them, okay? I'm gonna bring things because we need them, these kids deserve them, and if I don't put them in front of you, you can't say no.
To what extent, Brian, given that situation, that, that opportunity presents itself to us, is I think it's incumbent on this board to move it to the electorate, let the electorate decide, much like we did the past two referendums.
I agree, I agree, Bob, and I think this is a very unique opportunity, this isn't, because this opportunity exists now, I don't think we should ignore the, the feedback we've gotten at the last board meeting and most tonight regarding the Hawk Zone has been, and when I've got emails and people talking to me about it, has been very supportive of us moving forward with it. And because of that, I think we owe it to the electorate to take it to them and, and find out, again, I don't think this is an either-or proposition, it's not if we do this, then we don't do this. I think this is a unique situation, similar to the, the land building, something that came up, we need to make a decision whether we should move forward, and then because of, of, it's a purchase of a property, it goes to the electorate, electorate, and those people can make that decision and give us.
The meaning of the electorate of this, the land building, was anything far from 100%? And it wasn't a situation that really existed until it presented itself, much like this.
A real quick, just an update on the, the four buildings that, for school districts, actually four schools within the Milton School District, according to the article.
Yes.
So, there's four within the district that do not have the pass.
They mentioned.
Yeah, because I was, because they only mentioned our district in the article, they didn't mention any other research on any other district.
The rest, they do have that.
Correct.
Sequential.
Correct.
I knew I was, wasn't getting something.
But again, yeah.
And that to get off the Hawk Zone again, but I do wanna mention, we've been talking about those security entrances and putting new entrances in for years. They've been on that plan for, at least, and the student could probably give me exact dates, but at least for probably three or four years where we started the spacing approach. The high school is not addressed because if we built a new high school, we would obviously do that with a secured entrance, and then we would use the funds that we talked about in terms of rebuilding the high school, a piece of that would have gone to a secured entrance in front. So, that's the reason the, the high school and the middle school have not been addressed. The dollar amount is a, is a larger figure, figure, and the board does need to figure out how we're gonna, how we're gonna address that piece of it, so.
I would like, I, I'm not sure if there's gonna be a motion on this item, but if there were, I'd like a consideration, if there were to be a motion, for a roll call vote. So, if someone was so inclined to make the motion on item number 12, I would recommend it to include a roll call vote, but that's entirely up to the person making the motion, if there is a motion.
Oh, I'd like to make a motion that we, I'm not sure how to word this, that we give the electorate the opportunity to vote on.
I, I think it's Tom, I, I'm sorry, it's item 12. We got item 12 and we got item 13. Do you know what I mean?
Right. What I mean, just pass it on.
Right.
As if the board should give the electorate the opportunity.
Yeah, I'm not really sure.
I think there's two, well, potentially two, you know.
Well, I'll go to 13.
How, I guess I would, yeah. I don't know.
Clarification, Tim, I guess I need some clarification, I'm sorry, Tom, I didn't interrupt.
That's fair.
Well, let's, let's, we've got item 12 before us. And item 12 is discussion of possible action on an option stating terms for the purchase of the premises at 450 South John Paul Road. I might look ahead to item 13, where there was discussion of possible action to call a special school meeting to elect, of the electorate to authorize purchase.
And I think the, the council had those in that order for a purpose, so first you should take a.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Motion on the option.
Two potential motions, two?
Yeah.
Or one?
Two.
Two, that's my point.
As listed in the agenda.
Okay, okay. Was there any, was there any, there's no specific wording?
Just as it's listed it, right there on the agenda, item.
Item 12.
Yep.
Sorry, Tom.
Oh, good. I guess I make a motion that we take possible action on the purchase stating terms of purchase, premises at 450 South John Paul Road in Milton, Wisconsin.
Suck it.
Yeah. Literally, okay.
Okay, we've got a motion from Tom and a second from Betsy for action by this board on an op, on option stating terms for the purchase of the premises at 450 South John Paul Road in Milton, i.e. Hawk Zone, Hawk Zone. Further, further comments?
Just for clarification, that, this is just saying that we want, that we have the option to purchase, we want to.
We.
We want to drop this option to purchase the Hawk Zone.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Because the next item on the agenda is the manner in which it would be done.
Okay.
So, that's, the answer is yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I believe Mr. Westrick, that was the motion, and Betsy, you're the second. And any other questions, comments, concerns on this item? The motion did include a roll call, right, Kim?
Right.
Okay, so, I think I'll start down here, Don. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
No?
No.
Uh, Tom?
Yes.
Uh, Shelley?
Yes.
And myself, yes. We're listening. Get everybody? So, that passes six to one. Okay, we go on to item number 13. And item 13 is discussion and possible action to call a special school district meeting of the electors to authorize the purchase of the premises at 450 South John Paul Road in Milton, Wisconsin. And if anybody would be so inclined to make that motion, then I'd, I'd throw out their consideration for a roll call vote.
So, it's a move to being possible action to call for a special school district meeting of the electors, which would be what, March 12th, you said, to authorize the purchase of premises at 450 South John Paul Road in Milton, Wisconsin. Second.
How do you want the vote?
Roll call.
Are you agree with that, a second? Okay, Don?
I can start the other.
No, sorry, Don?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Betsy?
Yes.
Brian?
No.
Tom?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
And myself, yes, so that passes by a six to one margin. Okay, well, thank you, thank you for your patience with all of that, but there is a process by which this is done, and that's, the electorate vote is how it's done, so we will proceed with that, with that meeting on March 12th.
Is that by paper ballot?
Well, Kim, how was it?
I believe we talked about having a paper ballot, yeah, paper ballot, that would be printed up, it will have the motion on it, and you will check the yes box or no box.
It'll be a relatively short gathering on March 12th, I would anticipate, because that's the same night as regular school board meeting.
We're not doing anything crazy like checking IDs to make sure that they're in the district or anything crazy like that, or question.
Their age, yeah. That hasn't been decided, but we will have a, just as the annual meeting, you'll come and sign in and write down your address, and only obviously school.
I do recall that's how we did the electorate vote at March 12th, I don't know how many of you were at that meeting, but several years ago, when this building was purchased in a similar manner, so, but yeah.
I know most of you.
You gotta be a fan of it.
I don't do it very often.
And they're gonna decide for that special election.
With a potential time? Six o'clock on Monday, March the 12th, which is the same night as a regular school board meeting.
Mr. Hamel, is that gonna interfere with baseball practice?
So, uh, it's the first day of softball, 100 runs probably three to about six.
Okay.
So, baseball, they can practice at 6:30.
I think it's important to take this to electorate, let them decide, because this is their money, their purposing of the building, and we'll follow what they decide.
Okay, we move on, we're gonna go to item number, I mean, 14, right? Drawing of lots for the ballot order for the spring school board election to be held on Tuesday, April 3rd. We'd like to congratulate the six candidates that came through the primary, and so at this time, we're gonna have a drawing for the order of the ballot.
Go on, Mr. Hogan, everyone left Jim all alone in the front seat, so you're it.
I get it, I get it. Frank Wobbe. Joe Martin. Harvey Smith. Tony Aston. Simon McKenna. Shelley Crankney. Okay, well, thank you, thank you for doing that, sir. Okay, move on to item number 15, discussion, possible action on the 2017, 2018 open enrollment alternative application, which, Kim, I believe there was one?
Yes, there was just one transfer in student.
One in.
I make a motion that we accept the open enrollment application as presented, I pack a, second.
We got a motion from Karen, a second from Betsy, to accept the open enrollment in. Any questions, concerns? Karen, in all its favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Reposed.
Same.
And so, it's six to zero with one abstention. Kim?
Yep.
Okay, moving on to miscellaneous, item 16, staffing.
I approve of the staffing update as presented.
Second. We got a motion from Betsy and a second from Tom on approval of the staffing report as presented. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Reposed, that motion carries. Give some donations.
I'll make a motion to accept the Gibson donations to the district.
Second.
We got a motion from Don, a second from Tom to accept these Gibson donations, we have to board with our gratitude. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Reposed, that motion carries. Meeting dates, upcoming board and committee meetings.
We have our board docs training next Monday, March 5th, for the board at 4:30 here at your office. HR committee meeting is next Friday, March 9th, and then our next board meeting, March 12th, preceded by the special meeting of the electors at 6 o'clock at the Hawk Zone, 6:30 back here at the PDC for our regular meeting.
Tim, we talked last week about a strategic Monday meeting, I think we will try to schedule that in the next, a couple of weeks before next quarter, if possible.
All right. Okay, uh, let's see, turn the page, would entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statutes 19.85, parent one, parent C and E. Do you wanna read all that?
No, don't move.
But, well, before I, but remember, we're striking administration team discussion, but everything else will be fine.
Yes.
Okay, we got a motion from Tom.
Okay.
And a second from Karen, this requires a roll call vote. Sorry, Dan, we started down there again.
Uh, yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Betsy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you, that carries, the motion carries. Thank you all for attending this long meeting, appreciate your attendance. I'm gonna say.